Hello everyone and welcome to the Committee in the Hall for Tuesday, June 8th, 2021. I'm Councillor Peddingill, acting Mayor for the month, so I'll be chairing the Committee in the Hall meetings. Want to welcome you to Squamish Unceded and Traditional Territory, Alum Squallin, Listel Lipton, Squamish, and Wayway. First order of business, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Councillor French, second by Councillor Stoner, any opposed? That passes. Next is ministerial order M192. That pursuant to ministerial order number M192, the District of Squamish is excluding persons with public dependents at this June 8th, 2021 meeting on the basis that full public attendance in a manner consistent with public health orders and recommendations cannot be accommodated at this time, and the district is ensuring openness, transparency, accessibility, and accountability at this meeting by the following means. The meeting is hopefully being livestreamed, and the video of this meeting will be available on the district's website reviewing on an on-demand basis. Can I have someone who, that is, Councillor French, Councillor Race, anyone opposed, that carries? Just speak to some of our procedures quickly. Because we are doing an electronic meeting, if I remember, this next, read next, please let the Chair or Ms. Arthur's know so we can record this in minutes. Councillors, please identify yourselves one, or advise me that you push to the place on the speakers list. We are only required to state a name vote, no statement is required to vote in favor. Please put your telephone and computer on mute, let's see which should speak. We're all expected to be involved and to participate in the meeting. And if you are having technical difficulties, please text our CAO or our corporate officer, and we will recess the meeting for 10 minutes if the technical difficulty is on the district side, and we'll see if we can fix that. We have a really full agenda, which is why I'm trying to rush a little bit here. So maybe a little more pushy than usual, but keeping it on time, but we'll see what we can do. The first order of business is the Garibaldi Estates Neighborhood Plan, and I'd like to welcome Mr. Gunn, and I'll turn the floor over to you.
Yeah, good morning, thank you. My name is Matt Gunn, and I'm a community planner with the District of Squamish. I'm going to share my screen here. All right, and so today I'll be introducing the Garibaldi Estates Neighborhood Planning Process. As background to the project, in June 2018, the district adopted official community plan by law 2500. Policy 9.3C of the OCP provides direction to complete neighborhood plans for several areas of the community. While not explicitly stated in the OCP, the neighborhood plans were listed in order of priority. The Garibaldi Estates is the first neighborhood listed and is considered the top priority for neighborhood planning by the department, by the planning department. Staff resources are now available to work on this plan. So what are sub-area plans, or as they're also known, neighborhood plans? These are comprehensive, long-range plans prepared for a distinct geographic area and adopted by bylaw as a schedule to the OCP. Neighborhood plans, which should be consistent with the OCP policies, provide a greater level of detail about land use, density, community amenities, and critical needs based on detailed analysis and context. The plans are intended to address a comprehensive list of land use topics and policy directives. Many of the items are listed in section 9.3D of the OCP, which is depicted on the screen. I won't go through these items in detail, but they are included in the staff report and address a broad range of land use planning topics. The Garibaldi Estates Neighborhood Plan area is proposed to encompass the land north of Mamquam Road, east of Highway 99, south of any properties fronting Tantless Road, and west of the foot of the slope leading up to the Garibaldi Highlands. The plan is meant to guide future growth where there is growth capacity. Therefore, properties to the west of Highway 99, those fronting Tantless Road, and these areas are not considered to provide significant infill opportunity beyond the current or proposed development, and therefore have been excluded from the plan area. One unique attribute of the plan area is the Veterans Land Act or VLA lands. These lots were created for settling returned soldiers in order to facilitate small-scale farming. And there's quite a bit of area in the Garibaldi Estates that falls within this Veteran Land Act. Bylaw 2211 limits subdivision of these lands, and consequently, the parcels are much larger than typical single-unit subdivisions. Actually, most of these lots are not used for agricultural purposes, and the OCP includes policy support for the repeal of bylaw 211 to support infill development. Repealing this bylaw will inevitably result in significant redevelopment interest and proposals, and consequently, a neighborhood planning process is important at this time to create a land use vision for this area. I am getting some feedback, I'm not sure if others are, that maybe someone's on mute, but because of the VLA land context, there is significant opportunity in the neighborhood to achieve many policies that are included in the OCP and the Community Climate Action Plan. A future vision for the area could include objectives related to diverse and affordable housing, walkable neighborhoods which support active transportation modes, transit-oriented development, local employment, and low-carbon design. As such, existing policies are expected to play a large role in informing both the engagement activities and policy development through this planning process. Staff have conducted early interdepartmental discussion about this neighborhood plan. Two considerations have been identified related to potential density increases that might occur in the area. The first is the possible impact additional development could have on Highway 99 intersections when considering development at the university on two large future residential neighborhood land areas within the, outside of the plan area, but feeding intersections that the plan area uses on Highway 99 and infill within the estates. It is possible that the associated traffic volume could necessitate major intersection upgrades with significant costs on the highway. Therefore, traffic study is an important piece of early background research for this project and will be conducted to examine the issue. This traffic study would incorporate findings from recent studies in the area. A second consideration is the possible impact on firefighting resources. Extensive development of more dense housing forms such as apartments could result in the need for additional firefighting resources within the community. As part of the engagement process, staff have completed stakeholder mapping to ensure broad engagement. Staff intend to develop project partners within the identified stakeholder categories that are listed on the screen. These partners would be asked to help relay key information and engagement opportunities during the planning process to encourage stakeholders to participate in the process. Project partners would include individuals within existing representative organizations, existing contacts with established connections within these categories, and administrators or members of social media groups. And on the topic of social media groups, I do want to highlight that staff plan to engage established social media groups within the community that frequently discuss Squamish topics. The issue is not to engage in discussion in these forums, but to provide an opportunity to encourage participation and engagement activities within the platforms to ensure awareness of the process is high. The proposed neighborhood planning process involves five stages over a two-year period. Stage one of the process is currently underway and encompasses project scoping and interdepartmental and intergovernmental engagement. Stage two, neighborhood and community context, will include background research and public engagement around asset mapping and visioning. A new district online engagement platform will be used in this process. An RFP for the platform is currently open and is expected to close and be completed within time to use in the Garibaldi Estates Neighborhood Planning Process. And as well, open houses will be used if possible, given the public health directives. But we are interested in having strong online engagement as well as in-person open houses. And, you know, given where things are going, it seems like that might be possible for some stages within the process, but we will respond as appropriate throughout the process. In stage three, future neighborhood scenarios, possible land use scenarios will be presented, will they be prepared, and then presented to the community with preliminary information about topics such as housing form, employment space, and transportation infrastructure. The land use scenarios will be presented to the community through the online platform and through an open house again as possible. In stage four, proposed land use and policy plan, a proposed vision selected from the options that are presented in stage three will be presented along with a land use plan. And that again, that'll be through the online platform and open houses. And then stage five is the legislated bylaw adoption process. And these stages are intended to be completed over a two-year period culminating in May adoption of 2023. That concludes the presentation, and staff are now entrusted in any comments or questions from staff, from council.
Okay, thank you very much, Council. Any questions? Okay, great. Councillor French?
Thank you. I'm noticing, noting that the VLA lands are a significant distance from any public parks, and wondering if there is anything preventing us from including in the plan an expressed desire to create a neighborhood public park in that VLA area, and likely small. Any thoughts?
Yeah, that's a great comment. So there's actually direction in the OCP to do just that, that there is areas identified within the community that are underserved for parks. And one of the, at the back of the staff report, I've included a lot of the policy that I think we've got quite a bit of policy that's going to inform this process, and there is that policy from the OCP is included in that. And so it certainly looking at the land and how it could be developed over time will include consideration of how we can increase parks in the area. One of the advantages of doing a neighborhood planning process such as this is that we can look at the entire area comprehensively and try and come up with a vision that includes elements like this, that the risk of not doing a planning process in this way and allowing piecemeal development applications that will come if we repeal that bylaw 211 is that there won't be that opportunity to look at the kind of broader picture and find ways to try and address issues like the lack of park, and so, or parks. And so, yes, that is, that is a topic to be considered and identified, and this is a great opportunity to do it that would not be available if we didn't engage in this type of process.
Okay, Chair, just a quick follow-up. Could the process of creating a park in that area be formulated through negotiations when future rezoning discussions take place?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So the, the, to achieve a park will definitely require work through rezoning process. It would likely be that we'd need to identify some areas where that could be, that can be achieved, and then have some consideration for some kind of benefit to the landowner for that area, such as increased density or, you know, in a process where multiple parcels were consolidated and some increased density was created and some portion of that, some other portion of those, that parcel, or those parcels would be dedicated as park. And so that's where that larger vision is really required, because there is going to need to be some trade-offs. And perhaps some density that's allocated from one area to another to create space that could be a park.
Thanks, Chair. Those are all my questions, and I have comments that'll say for later.
Okay, thanks, Councillor Stoner, and then Councillor Race.
Thank you. Through the Chair, Mr. Gunn, can you just clarify the map that you had up of the VLA lands? Is that all of the properties in that map, or just the ones that are shaded in red?
Let me bring up that map for a second. Would you like me to, no, sorry. So yes, it's all of those properties in that black boundary? Those are all VLA properties, and so all of those have been held at roughly their current size. There has been some minor subdivision possible, but that is, that entire area is held in that.
That's what I assumed, but they were shaded in red, so I was a little bit confused as to which ones.
Apologies.
That's helpful. I don't know, all good. And I guess my follow-up question to that is, I appreciate that there isn't much active agricultural practice that is happening on those lands currently. You might not know the answer to this, but were they assessed for agricultural viability in the Squamish Valley agricultural plan? Or do we have a sense of like if they're actually, may not currently be used as agricultural, but could they be?
Yeah, unfortunately through the Chair, I don't know how those were considered in the agricultural plan, but I certainly will look into that. As part of this planning process, you know, community agriculture or urban agriculture could certainly be considered, and if there are areas that are particularly of high value, there may be some opportunities to consider that. And so that's something we can certainly keep on the radar and keep in front of mind.
And then my other question was just on the timeline, and I appreciate that these are complex projects. I think one of the challenges that we had with our last experience with the Loggers East Plan was the amount of time that lapsed between and the shift in who was involved in the engagement over that lengthy period of time. And so I'm just curious if staff can speak a little bit to, I don't want to like, I want to be honest about what the timeline is going to be to get this sort of work done. But how do we, how do we counter that challenge of like losing interest and renewed interest over such a lengthy project period?
Thank you. Through the Chair, yeah, that is a really key point is how do we maintain that engagement through the process? And, you know, is the timeline the appropriate timeline? And to be honest, when we, at the start of this process, when we looked at how we wanted to arrange the timeline, we did recognize that because that is feedback that was given to staff earlier in the, a few months ago when we were discussing neighborhood planning. There are a couple of complications. One is that to provide good engagement opportunities, we really need the time to put good information together and give the time for the community to get involved. And, you know, especially at these times with the, you know, the context, the, you know, shift to a lot of online engagement. We do have concerns that moving too quickly could prevent having good opportunity for engagement across the community. And we also heard loud and clear that there was a desire to have a really broad engagement, not just to be focused on a few, you know, people who want to develop within the neighborhood, that we want to pull in groups from across the community. And so we're really keen to target a broader range of people and give them a solid opportunity to engage. The, and another complication is there, you know, looking at the, at the next two years, there are probably some periods of the next two years where heavy engagement will not be completely appropriate or desirable. And so there's also some, some times there where we want to be careful about how much engagement we're doing. So given that, it just did not seem plausible to do truncated sub-area planning process, given the complexity of items here. So I think that two-year process is really a realistic timeline. You know, we could shoot for shorter, but I'm really not confident that we would achieve it. And so to, to try and ensure that there is consistent information and consistent familiarity with what's going on, I think the, to address your question, I think the, the new online engagement platform that the district is currently pursuing is going to be really helpful for that particular aspect. We also heard loud and clear at the, at the debrief from Subarea Planning previously with council that we really needed to up our game with online engagement. And so that's led to this RFP where we're bringing, we're looking for a platform that we can use to engage online at a much higher level. And I think the platforms that we've looked at have really hubs of information where we can do a couple of things. One, we can put all of our information up there so it's accessible. But two, there's both question and answer and forums that people can engage in and ask staff. And we haven't decided exactly, we have to see what platform we end up with. But what we are committed to doing is having more opportunity for people to have a conversation online about the, the project, and for that information to be visible by everybody over time. So I think that will allow the ability to track the conversation, and people will be able to go back and see, people have very similar questions. It's often the case that, you know, many people are asking the same thing. And so if we have a consistent place where those questions come up and are addressed, then at any point along the way, say we're like a year down the road, we can, anybody can go to that hub of information on the engagement platform and see what the questions were that were going on at different stages, see what the responses were. It's going to, we're going to use it as, as more of a dialogue so that rather than having these individual conversations that are in one location, and people can always go back and see what that conversation was along the way. And I really think that's going to provide a better opportunity for people to see the progression, and even if time has passed, understand where we are in the process.
I have, thank you, Councillor Race, and then Councillor Anderson.
Yeah, actually, Councillor Herford had his hand up before me, so I'm happy to wait.
Okay, I'll go to Councillor Herford then.
Thank you. The, I have a question around the, the traffic impacts. And I've found that these, these studies in the, in the past, these reports that we've received have been rather challenging, just figuring out what, you know, who or what development is responsible for, what amount of impact, and so on. And with this one, because there's so much development and potential development up, sort of upstream, if you will, through the Highlands, you know, university and potential future neighborhoods up there. What, what is best practice for, or what are you considering using for like the amount of build-out upstream over time? And how is that sort of accounted for, given that it sort of flows down into this, this neighborhood?
So we, in, through the Chair, and the setting up the terms of reference and then completing the traffic impact assessment does involve making some, some guesses or estimating what the maximum potential density could be in those developments. So the university, we have a very clear idea of what is possible in the university under the current zoning, and then we have some idea of what, you know, has been highlighted as targets for some of the lands to make them viable in some of the other areas of the university. For the, for some of the residential, future residential areas, we would have to take again guesses. But there have been discussion with one of those properties around some of the scenarios that they've made proposals on. So we would likely take scenarios that have been proposed and take that as a guess that feeds in the potential density for those lands. So we, essentially, we do some estimation, and then we have to do some estimation for the estates. And then we look at what that maximum capacity or volume would be. But having said that, I think one of the things I should clarify about the traffic impact assessment is that our major concern with the traffic impact assessment is that once we take all that volume, so we estimate how much volume we would have in these different locations, and then run the model and see when the intersections onto Highway 99 would, would fail and not be functioning at a proper level. Once we have a sense of what that traffic volume is, I think what is likely from early conversations with engineering is to probably assume that we don't want to go to the level where those are going to fail because those intersection upgrades are potentially so costly to change the, the access onto the highway at those kind of two key locations from the estates, that in the initial discussions, I think what it sounds like is that we're more likely to say that's rather than, you know, how are we going to pay for that upgrade and how do we equitably share that? I think we're more likely to say, let's take a guess at the most capacity we'll get in these different greenfield areas, and then how much infill would we want to support in the Garibaldi Estates? Let's set that maximum infill to be below that threshold. Because if we cross over that threshold and we get into much higher density and the, those traffic intersections are failing, it may be that the costs are so significant that it's, it's not really possible for our community in the foreseeable future to afford those upgrades. So I see that that traffic impact assessment more is setting some thresholds that we don't want to go beyond.
Okay. Thank you, that addresses my, my question for now, although I do feel like one of those intersections at least is potentially at or beyond capacity, but we'll leave that for another day.
Okay, thank you. I'll go to Councillor Race and then Councillor Anderson.
Thank you, and I'm just concerned, or not concerned, wondering about the resources for this. Is this a situation where we intend to add outside consultants to it? Or are we going to do this internally and backfill? Or are we just going to deal with existing resources? Could you speak in general terms about that?
Yeah, I'll, thank you, through the Chair, I will speak briefly to this. But if, if any of my directors or managers want to jump in, I'll leave that space as well. But it is currently something that we're doing with existing capacity within the district. We do need some outside consulting, for example, with the traffic impact assessment. But in terms of actually completing the, the plan, doing the engagement, drafting the plan, that will be done by existing resources, myself. And we have capacity within the department to allocate my time to this project at this time.
Thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Anderson, and then Mayor Elliot.
Thank you, Mr. Gunn. My question will concern the geographic scope of the proposed neighborhood plan. And you cite as criteria, at west of the highway, this area is largely developed, to quote from the report, properties along Tantless Road do not provide significant input, infill opportunity. I'd like to pose three scenarios or issues that are around the boundaries of the area, both on Tantless Road and on the west side, and just ask the general question of how or whether these matters might be taken into account. Firstly, the funeral chapel is located at the north, near the northeast corner, which is northwest corner on Tantless Road, and it has a parking problem, and it's getting worse. Whenever I attend there, every time I attend there, it's getting worse, and I hear a lot from the, the managers of that facility. And the parking is spilling up north on Tantless Road, and they rely on that parking. So that's just one example of an issue that comes up, skirting the boundary. How do you deal with parking for facilities when they're outside of the neighborhood plan scope area? The second illustration of what's something outside the scope area is in Tantless Road, we have new developments in, in planning, and we have discussed public realm elements, what new developers may be able to contribute in terms of new facilities or public realm amenities, and whether that might be considered or at least indicated or pointed to given consideration in this neighborhood plan, in case it has implications as per the judgment of the people managing the plan. Thirdly, on the corner of Government, Government Road, Garibaldi Way and Highway 99, we have a cluster of commercial businesses there that, to my view, are in transition. They're older, older buildings, and local landowners predominantly. And we might look ahead over the next decade or so and see some new development there. And might that not be taken into account in this Garibaldi Estates plan? I'll leave it at that, thank you. I'm just asking a general way, what will the neighborhood plan process do about these spillover situations or neighboring scenarios?
At present, you know, there'd probably be some consideration for how, you know, some peripheral issues, and perhaps the parking would be one that would be considered. But given the scope that was originally considered and contemplated, the, the, you know, stuff, for example, on the opposite side of the highway or the public, public realm elements outside of the plan area are, you know, haven't initially been considered as part of the topic to be considered. One of the, one of the reasons for that is that the plan is likely, given the kind of broader policy context and the unique characteristic of the VLA lands and the, you know, potential opportunity that they provide for achieving some of our policy goals, that the plan, you know, could be, you know, a fair bit of a policy that would be relevant to that area that might not be relevant to some of these other areas. policy that would be relevant to that area that might not be relevant to some of these other areas. And so one of the concerns is that if there, if we're discussing policies and, and land use concepts for the VLA lands, for example, that conversation may not be as relevant to some of these areas. The, the issues may be quite different as we go to, for example, the opposite side of the highway. And it, there is a bit of concern about how the, how people in, in areas that aren't necessarily in that same context would respond to the kind of, the general development of the plan. And so that was initially kind of trying to focus on one area that has really a specific characteristic and potential opportunities that we, we kind of want to keep the plan focused on that particular concept and, and direction. And the more, as we bring in the broader, the, the kind of the more intricate and the more involved the process becomes and the the longer it could take to, to achieve. But having said that, the, you know, certainly I'm open to the direction from council as to what they would like to bring into the, the scope of the plan and, and, you know, yeah, open to comments and, and direction.
Thank you, Mr. Gunn.
Thank you. I'll go to Mayor Elliott.
I think Jonas was going to add something to the conversation.
Oh, sorry, is that, Mr. Valanescas, please?
Thank you, Chair. I was just going to add that there will be peripheral issues considered. And when we look at the amenities in the area, we would consider, or the commercial services, we would consider those adjacent areas, just like we did with Loggers East. So if there's any population based projections, you know, we would account for what's happening around the neighborhood, but the land use would be focused on where the future development will likely be.
Okay, thank you. And I'll go to Mayor Elliott now.
Thank you. So I was going to ask similar questions. I think for me, leaving out those properties just to the north of the, the northern boundary of this area is, is problematic. And I understand that they're already in planning. But the reason that the feedback we provided to staff was that these buildings, which were quite dense, didn't contemplate their relationship with the surrounding neighborhoods. And so I think for me, in learning from Loggers East, Loggers East was sort of more isolated. And this map is connected both to the Tantless neighborhoods to the north and then the Highlands area to the east and then across the highway. You know, that, that dense sort of congregation of housing is walkable, is a walkable neighborhood because of what's across the highway. And so I wonder if we can do kind of like we did with the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan. It's like shaded areas, which are areas for further study or in just something to show that these are interfaces or interconnectivity areas for this neighborhood plan that we want to be mindful of. And I think that band of, of empty land on the north section, the school for many of these families is across the highway. And so I kind of want to highlight the school and that block of older commercial that Counselor Anderson pointed out because we're trying to create complete neighborhoods. And so I want to show that the school is still somehow connected and should be thought of about how we get kids safely back and forth to that overpass, that sort of thing. So it's almost like you want that hard line, Mr. Gunn. And then you want some sort of softer shaded areas in some key spots where we want this neighborhood to think about, yeah, how are we getting everyone back and forth to the school? What would we put on that commercial corner if that land redeveloped that would help complete this neighborhood? And how do we want that development to the north to interact with, with our neighborhood? And, and, and we would want to alert that neighborhood to that as, as that development came forward through our planning process. It kind of just, is it connected to the neighborhood to the north? We're not really going to do a neighborhood plan there anytime soon. So it kind of needs to contemplate its relationship to this area, I think. So I'd kind of like to see kind of some, some shaded areas there. My other question is, you know, we have these, one of the challenges of the Loggers East was that there was this, these large gaps. And when I look at the timeline, there's up to sort of six months between touch points with the public. Be a lifetime in public opinion. And I wonder if there's a way to address that, so have midpoint check-ins during that long policy writing piece? Like little reminders about where we are or like little mini surveys or touch points that could inform your writing as you go along. I'm just trying to avoid those large gaps again, where people sort of forget, oh yeah, that's what we said back here. Do you have any thoughts about that?
Through you, Chair. There, there were two items that you brought up. And so maybe I'll go, I'll, I'll talk about them in, in sequence. And the first one, in terms of the scope, I just want to clarify that I'm, I'm hearing from council that there, the, you know, there's real importance to, from the outset, make sure we're doing a good job of addressing relationships to areas that are outside the, the hardline boundary, that the periphery needs to be incorporated. So that's good feedback and I think we can certainly do that. And I heard, you know, that they're having one boundary of where we're actually planning land use makes sense. And then, you know, perhaps a second category of, of areas that have a relationship that we want to make sure we have policies that are relevant to the relationship between these areas. Would it be fair to say that the hardline boundary for the land use planning is appropriate and that we need to identify locations where we need to consider the peripheral interaction and relationships? Or do we want to expand that hardline boundary to encompass some of these other lands? That's one question I have, and maybe we can answer that at some point. But certainly, staff is open to, to changing the scope or the boundaries as directed by council. And if the, if the direction is to create a hardline boundary and then have some other areas of relationship consideration, that certainly is something we can address and make sense. But yeah, before the end of the meeting, if I could get direction as to whether or not the existing established or proposed hardline boundary makes sense, and then we just need to identify relationship areas or if the hardline boundary has to change. And then the other point, touch points or midpoint check-ins during gaps between the key events. Yeah, that is certainly something that's a good direction. We can come up with a strategy to have some kind of reminder of what's going on as part of the, at, at each of those stages where we go have a, a community engagement event and, and process with the online and then come to council, we'll have an engagement summary. So maybe midpoint between those check-ins, we can have a reminder of what happened in the last stage with the engagement summary highlighted, but some of the key points brought out. And maybe we can use that to bring up some questions that will inevitably come up through the, the policy consideration and, and the policy drafting page, stage between, between the major check-ins, we can have a brief summary of, of, of kind of what's happened. And here are some of the questions that have come up in between as we continue towards the next major point. So I, I think that's something quite reasonable, especially using the engagement platform. If we can bring people on, get them involved in that, maybe we can use that effectively for those midpoint check-ins where we both remind and clarify some of the outstanding questions.
Thanks. Mr. Gunn, Chair, can I just respond to Mr. Gunn's question?
Yeah, do you want to actually switch to comments? I have a handful of counsel race looking at a time. Why don't we flip in the comments now? So Mayor Elliott, if you can start with your comments and try to address this whole piece of part of it.
Your question is a good one, Mr. Gunn. And I think for me, the, the hardline map for land use planning makes sense. The only place I might expand it would be to the north, unless there's a good planning reason why we can't include those properties currently being contemplated for development. But to me, that's where it would make sense. I think that having a piece of our upfront engagement about what is this community to the rest of Squamish, right? So it is a, it is one of our commercial hubs. And so understanding the community's perspective of how they see themselves in relationship to Brackendale or further up the hill in the Highlands or to North Yards. So like what, who are, what do they want to be? How do they see themselves? And so then I think that's why we, we contemplate maybe some of these shaded areas, which is Mamquand School and some of those commercial areas, Kitty Corner are technically part of that walkability. And we want to exclude them, but I think both you and Mr. Valanescas point out that the land use needs here and the characteristics of the VLA land make it quite different than across the highway. But I just, I want to make sure we understand its relationship across the highway and, and in all four directions, really. Because people will, from all over the community, come there. So what does it want to be to the community and how does it want to fulfill that role? I think that's an important question to, to ask.
Mr. Gunn?
Yeah, certainly we can address that. The one thing in, in your comments there that I do want to address, and I think I did try to highlight this in the staff report in the presentation, but I think maybe it's important that I make that point again is that you know, we certainly want to go to the neighborhood and the community and say, what does this neighborhood want to be? And what, how does it relate to the rest of the community? But I do, I think it's very important to highlight that given a, a number of our OCP and Community Climate Action Policies, there are a number of objectives that we may be able to meet in this area because of the, the historic VLA lands and its location close to a commercial area on our core transit network on the highway. And given that there is quite a bit of possibility for redevelopment, there are a number of, of policy goals that we may be able to achieve in this location that we may not be able to achieve anywhere else in the community. And so I think that broader context of what is the community, community want to achieve? For example, employment space, especially if we're looking for things like office space. There are only so many locations in our community where we're likely to be able to develop larger amounts of office space. And this is one of those locations. And so there are some broader community goals and aspirations that we've identified that we may, you know, obviously we may want to look at this area for achieving some of those goals. So I, I just, I think that's something to, to keep in mind that these broader policy pieces are going to be important in this location.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to, maybe you got about 45 seconds each for our comments. Really think about what you want to say. I'll go to Counselor Race with that question as well.
Well, thank you. I, my question can migrate to a comment, actually. And I, I generally agree with the boundaries and I'm kind of like the mayor. I mean, it is difficult to ignore when you're setting these boundaries, a, a large piece of undeveloped and potentially rezoning land that is just more or less on the north boundary to accomplish some of the things that we might want to see in that neighborhood generally. So I'll, I'll just make that comment. The other comment is around the traffic study. And if I understood you correctly, in answer to Counselor Herford, you got to the point where you look at the capacity of the intersections and then more or less let that define what the upstream development might be. But really, you know, when, when I think of this plan, I'm thinking of it sort of being something that will be valuable for decades and, and that may not work. Right now, for example, we have another intersection, which is sort of a half an intersection. It's a right onto the highway up at the end of Tantless Road. And what would it take to activate that one to bleed off some of the traffic from the two intersections that right now are, are close to failure? In fact, they do fail, technically speaking, quite consistently. And the other thing that occurred to me is in, in some discussion way in the past, there was talk about a frontage road. Another road, more or less parallel to Highway 99, coming through this area and probably starting down or in Loggers Lane, down more or less where Brennan Park is and a bridge across. And given the, the connection to Loggers East and the connection, potential connection to Valley Cliff, you kind of just extend that forward, extend it northward. And it means another bridge across the Mamquand. But given the cost, some of these other solutions, if you could get local traffic off the highway, it can ease the highway congestion and it may be one of the more realistic solutions. And so we're not going to decide that today, of course, but just to kind of expand the scope of the, of the highway or the traffic study to consider, you know, where do we want to be 30 or 40 years from now? And what are we going to need? And while we may not build it tomorrow, we want to be able to plan for it in this process, I think. So I'll stop there. No time's tight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor French, and then I'll go to Counselor Stone.
Thanks, Chair. My, my initial take on the study area was that it's ideal. And then hearing today, the notion of having soft lines out into the impacted bordering areas, I, I think is great. Because we don't want to lose sight of how impactful the transformation of the study area is going to be for those neighboring and, and bordering areas. And when I looked initially at the boundary as it was drawn, my eye went to Paco Road. And after some thought about whether it should be included, my conclusion was that that area has big issues that would just make this initiative needlessly complex. However, having soft lines out into an area like that, I, I see is really advantageous and, and at least being mentioned and recognized as an area with potential impacts. And like we did with Loggers East and that neighborhood plan, I'd like to see this plan specifically mention tiny homes as an acceptable housing form for this area, because the large VLA properties have ample room for ADUs and particularly like tiny homes and just further diversification of our housing options. Thank you.
Spoke Counselor Stoner, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Through the chair, I'm generally supportive of the direction that this is going. I would be open to the idea of, of pushing the northern boundary of the plan area to include though, a few of those properties that front panelists, just given the impact that they will have on this broader neighborhood and am supportive of those softer lines. So appreciate that the, the planning area is hard, but making sure that that context for the broader neighborhood is in place, I think will be important. I agree with Counselor Race's comments around the, the chicken and the egg of the traffic management study and the impact study on the highway. I think we're close to capacity already. And so if we use that as our limiting factor, I don't think we'll be able to support much densification here, even if it is on our active transportation network. So I think we need to know what is the cost of, if we're going to have to update those intersections at some point, what is the cost? And how do we make sure that we're planning for those costs in the medium to long term? And aside from that, I think, as I mentioned, I'd be curious just to make sure that we incorporate this skirmish valley agricultural plan into this and try to realize what the availability for, for that VLA land is in terms of agriculture. And I think that this is a good direction. I had some hesitation on the timeline, but appreciate staff's response to my question. And I think that with the new online engagement platform, that will actually serve as a very visible capturing of dialogue over time, which I think will really help the process. So that gave me some comfort there. Thanks.
We have both Counselor Anderson and Counselor Herford.
Thank you. First of all, on the agriculture gardening use of these lands and the original kind of intention or vision, that in fact was realized during the 1960s and 70s. My parents were very much involved in the fall fair and there were many vegetable gardeners occupying those lands in the VLA. So I think we should hold on to that notion as per Counselor Stoner's comment. Secondly, a bit of a recommendation. Under Planning Process Stage Three, there's a number of things that this plan is supposed to be including and they're listed here and I won't list them. But one thing that I feel is missing that should be explicit, and that is neighborhood hub functions. That needs, I think, to be clearly in focus for us among all of the other things in that list under Stage Three Visions and Goals, Neighborhood Functions. Neighborhood functions, plural, because it made a different site score. Finally, a bit of a reflection. We have some very big shoes to fill in taking this on. Garibaldi Estates was developed from the late 50s through the 60s by Pat Good. Pat Good was literally one of the founders of our district of Squamish. He had a vision for a complete community. And it turns out, years later, that he was really quite successful in implementing it. He considered industrial park, he built Paco Road Industrial Park. He had services, building supplies, gas station, retail, churches, the funeral chapel. It was a complete picture. So we should not lose sight of the shoes that we're trying to fill in following that vision or a new updated vision for Garibaldi Estates. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Herford?
Thank you. I'm supportive of the general concept here. I do think that those Tantalus properties, I'd like to see them in. I don't know what's involved in the process of their applications and how complex that is, but just as I look at that map and I think about how the neighborhoods can and should be working, I see those as a critical part of that. So if possible, I think the inclusion of those properties on the north edge of the study area would be great. I like the concept of soft lines. I also had thought about the Paco, both Paco Road and those commercial spaces on the west side of the highway that will have some development pressure. So I think the soft lines, sort of as outlined, could be a solution for making sure those are contemplated. And I am really concerned around the intersections, even just as they sit today, static without any future development. I'm not super comfortable there. So I'm curious about about the work involved to, I guess, what the triggers are for upgrade and cost and how we plan for that in the future. So that particular area of this planning process should receive as much scrutiny as we can collectively give it. But I'll, I look forward to kicking off this and sorry, I was a little, the timeline, I think, is reasonable. When I first saw it, I think sometimes when we want to have this, when the need for a plan is realized, we'd like to have the plan, you know, last week. But I do think that this is a, that it is a reasonable timeline. And I hope that we can stick to it, because if it does stretch past this, it may have to go back to the beginning of the planning process, because the rate of change is so high in our community. But thank you for your work on this so far.
Okay, thank you. I'll just add a couple of comments, and then, Mr. Gunn, maybe I'll just confirm the comments from counsel. So mine are, I'm comfortable with the timeline. I understand the necessity of it, and it sounds like staff has a robust plan to deal with the length of time and the engagement around this. I would support possibly extending to the north a bit to include some of that Tantalus Road development. One way or another, I think that has to be considered quite closely with this plan. Across the highway, I'm less certain. Everything I've read suggests to me that despite a short distance, maybe it's only 20 or 30 meters, but psychologically, I would like that. Really creates a separate neighborhood. And so I think where that may have relevance is, we may need to think about where does a school go? If we want to grow this whole side of the highway, maybe a school needs to go on this side of the highway, as opposed to just the Mamquand School. But I'm not sure about extending the whole Mamquand Plan area across the highway. The other piece, I really like the idea of restricting development to current intersection capacity. I feel like, you know, maybe a discussion around expectations, but I feel there's a lot of capacity there. In my opinion, from everything I've read, we can't plan to have all this, all this redevelopment with everyone having cars. We have to figure out different and more efficient ways of doing things. And so I really like sort of holding the line basically where we are and figuring out what we need to develop within that existing infrastructure. So those are my three cents, I guess. What I heard is some support to increase scope to the north. Mr. Gunn, maybe do you want to clarify what you've heard about the scope?
Yeah, so the two areas that I heard the most about for increasing the scope is to contemplate the large undeveloped parcels to the north of the proposed plan area and to include the commercial area across the highway from the, from the plan area at the north end. Both of those are quite reasonable to do, and I think we could just change the scope boundaries to include those. And then I heard very clearly that there was a strong desire to think more about some of the peripheral areas and how the relationship is going to be affected and what things we need to consider in that relationship over time. And so I think we can create some soft boundaries, some shaded areas outside the hard boundaries that we can make consideration of as we, you know, in the development of the plan and what needs to be considered for those areas.
Mr. Valaniskis, sorry, your hand?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to raise one issue. Going north along Tantalus Road, really, there's that one big property, 40, 480 Tantalus Road, where we do have a rezoning application currently in stream. So if we want to add that area into land use consideration, that would mean that the rezoning application would have to get suspended. So just for context, for counsel, that may be an issue.
Mayor Allen?
I guess my question is back to staff, which is the feedback they got at Committee of the Whole was that this building is just a monument to itself and has no relationship to the surrounding neighborhood. And so how do we marry the fact that we're going to engage deeply on this area and the estates? And they somehow don't need to... So if they go through the rezoning without being part of this neighborhood plan, how will we meet our goals to make sure that they're part of a solution, but not part of a problem?
Well, we've taken that feedback, and I believe staff have been working with the applicants on refining the application before it comes back to counsel for further review. And that's certainly feedback that we would be working on in terms of how we incorporate this with the surrounding neighborhood. But it would be impossible for us to advance that application in any way forward if we decide to put it in as part of the, as part of the area for land use planning with the neighborhood plan. So the neighborhood plan will incorporate what's happening on that property, but it would, yeah, that application would have to be suspended until the neighborhood plan is well advanced and if we included that area.
Are there any other rezonings pending in this area?
That's a major one. I don't believe there's anything else. We've been sort of telling people that they need to wait for that, the VLA area, to apply for rezoning until we've done the plan. So the 4480, I think, is the only major rezoning we have there. My recommendation would be that we pick that area in for context, but allow this application to proceed under the current OCP policy guidance.
Why don't I just give us a second? I'll change topics just briefly, and people can ruminate on this a little bit. Just clarifying, Mr. Gunn, there's some different comments around intersections and traffic. With the traffic plan that you discussed, is that going to cover those comments already? Or do you need more feedback or clarity?
Yeah, sorry. I got, I think I've got clear instruction from counsel that there is a desire to look at the long range implication of potential changes to those intersections. In my initial discussion with engineering, they suggested that the costs were so high that we probably didn't want to go there. But given this direction, I will go back and examine fully what opportunities we can look at for changes to the intersection and for broader connection to the south, possibly including a frontage road, and examine, I'll need to talk to engineering to find out, you know, what the scope of that is, and we'll certainly look for opportunities to incorporate a broader consideration of those moving into the future. So I think I've got good direction. We want to look at it in more detail. It may still turn out that it's so expensive that it's challenging, but I will certainly examine that fully.
Sure. Mr. Valaniskis, can I clarify if we left that north section of Tantalus out of the explicit study area? Any rezoning that council would consider would still be at counsel's discretion, and we could consider where the neighborhood plan is, what we've seen of that in our zoning deliberations whenever this occur. If the developer opted not to wait for their plan to go through?
That's correct, yes. So counsel's full discretion on any rezoning application, and this is no different.
So counsel, any thoughts on how to wrap up this last little piece? Counsel Rais?
Yeah, thank you. So when I think of those properties, thinking of possible amenities that might be sort of more neighborhood driven as opposed to property driven, in other words, be valuable for a larger area. Things like that. And I think the actual form of housing, from my perspective, is not likely to change. And that's significantly, I think, what the rezoning is about. And so I think it would be important just to make sure, first of all, the traffic connections are real. In other words, do we dump everybody out onto Tantalus Road? Or is there some other way people would exit and enter those properties to sort of spread the load around? And also, you know, if we're talking about parklets and things like that, it's easy enough to take that into account during a rezoning. And so staff, I think, could get, turn their mind to that. There's probably some thoughts now. I don't want to start talking for planning, but there probably are some thoughts now at a high level of what the Garibaldi Estates neighborhood might need or might want and should consider possibly getting some of that or trying to get some of that from these rezonings. So I'd be inclined to, I don't necessarily want to suspend the rezoning applications, but just to have planning staff, I think, sort of consider how it will actually marry itself into the other neighboring neighborhoods.
Are people satisfied with leaving it there? Or do we feel like we need a little more specific? Mr. Gunn, maybe can I put you on the spot?
Okay, so what I heard last there was that we do not want to suspend the rezoning, but that we want to do our best to consider at this preliminary stage what the needs from that property would be from the broader Garibaldi Estates area and try to achieve that or highlight that discussion in the rezoning process. Is that an accurate reflection?
See, Counsel Rais?
Yeah, that's more or less what I said. Yep.
Okay, I'm seeing some nodding and smiles. So we have a motion to endorse the proposed engagement plan with the comments, two main comments we discussed about the scope and the traffic. Counsel Stoner moves. This is the second. Counsel French, new discussion? See none, anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we will take a six-minute break. We're behind, so hopefully we can pick up some time, be really succinct with our questions. The next presentation is a long one, so we'll come back a quarter after and try to avoid it really much. Okay, welcome back, everyone. And we are still on the Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, June 8, 2021. And we're here to receive a report on the Chikai Fan. I'll think, I'll let the report run its course, lots of questions later. There's a lot of material to cover, so just ask counsel to keep things at a high level and let's try to avoid any specific parcels installed afterwards. It's sort of keep our questions to kind of bigger picture impacts as well as what's all needed, if we can. With that context, I'll turn it over to Mr. Rolson.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'll just share my screen here. Are you seeing that?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, great, thank you. My name is David Rolson. I'm the manager of municipal infrastructure with the District of Squamish. And I have joining me today Alex Strauss. He's the design lead and engineer of record for the Chikai Barrier that is currently in the detailed design stage. I also have joining me John Matthews, the president of Squamish Sea to Sky Developments, which is a development partnership with the Squamish Nation and Matthews West, as well as Jess Herman, a project engineer with SSSD. That's short for Squamish Sea to Sky Developments. So the objective of today's presentation is to provide counsel with an update on a couple of key milestones that have been reached on the Chikai Fan debris flow hazard mitigation. We're not seeking any decisions today, so this is mostly to provide information and an update, as well as provide an opportunity for questions and discussion. So the Chikai Fan debris flow hazard has been identified dating back to at least the 1950s, and it is the most studied alluvial fan in Canada. In 2014, an expert panel was assembled by the province, the district, and the Squamish Nation Development Partnership, and they had two main conclusions. The first was a frequency magnitude curve, which is essentially how big of a debris flow can occur and with what associated frequency or return period. And they concluded that the maximum credible event that could occur is a 1 in 10,000-year return period, five and a half million cubic meter debris flow event. They also concluded that based on that hazard and the existing developments on the fan, that there is a need for mitigation, whether or not there's any new developments on the Chikai Fan. In 2015, a second expert panel was convened to advise on risk tolerance criteria that should be considered for new and existing developments. And they recommended what is now becoming a common risk tolerance criteria that is used in many jurisdictions throughout the world, and that defines what degree of risk to loss of life is accepted by society. In 2016, the district completed an assessment of mitigation alternatives for the Chikai Fan. We looked at eight different mitigation potential opportunities, including basins, barriers, berms, as well as retreat from the fan. That assessment concluded that a large basin or a barrier near the apex of the Chikai Fan on the Chikai River that is funded through development is the preferred option, and that we should go down that path and basically exhaust that potential opportunity to determine whether it's feasible prior to considering anything further, because that has the potential to save the district tens of millions of dollars in mitigation. And the barrier at the apex of the fan also protects the greatest area of the Chikai Fan. So since 2013, BGC Engineering, who has been retained by Squamish Sea to Sky Developments, have been advancing hazard and risk studies, as well as have been advancing hazard and risk studies, as well as the detailed design of the barrier. This is very highly technical and specialized work. And so in 2018, the district, the province, and developer formed an independent expert review panel in order to provide advice and ensure that work is being completed to the highest standard. That panel was originally comprised of three experts. They included Dr. Scott McHughel, Mr. Doug Van Dyne, and Mr. Nigel Skirmer, all experts in their field. And just this year, a fourth member was added as we're now transitioning from hazard and risk assessment work into the detailed design of the barrier. And so his additional expertise is is being valued. The IDRP reports to an executive committee that is comprised of a representative from the district, the province, and Skomish Sea to Sky Developments. So that includes myself, the chief engineer with the province of BC Ian Pilkington, and the president of SSSD, John Matthews. So the focus of today is really on hazard and risk, but it is important to recognize that this work is all being funded by Skomish Sea to Sky Developments and through a potential development opportunity. So I want to provide just a brief snapshot of that development for context. In 2013, an OCP amendment and zoning amendment application were submitted by SSSD. From 2013 to 2018, there were several activities and investments that took place. So this included public information sessions and design workshops. The first readings were provided in 2016. There were two public hearings in 2017 and 2018. In 2018, there was a discussion with council regarding barrier maintenance and funding. At that meeting, council endorsed a strategy of sharing the cost for maintenance between a local area service that would be imposed on the development area, as well as general taxation across the wider community. In 2018, the third reading was provided for the OCP amendment and zoning amendment. Development itself is located along Ross Road in North Brackendale in a higher risk area of the Chikai Fan. It's a mixed use development comprised of 1,215 units. That's 537 single dwelling units, 678 multiple dwelling units. And there's also a neighborhood commercial area, as well as a significant park dedication. As part of the third reading, there were several conditions that were established that need to be met prior to adoption of the rezoning and OCP amendment bylaws. And many of these pertain to hazard, Chikai Fan hazard and risk mitigation. So that included finalizing debris flow modeling and providing that mapping for public use, preparing the quantitative risk assessment, also called a QRA, to establish baseline risk levels. So that means prior to any developments occurring and prior to any mitigation, completing the detailed design of offsite mitigation measures, which is primarily entailing this large basin. Preparing the operations and maintenance manual to determine what we the district will need to do to to maintain this barrier through its full lifecycle and the associated costs of those activities, and then also to develop a funding model to ensure that there is a sustainable funding model that we will that we can use to to maintain the barrier. And then completing the final quantitative risk assessment to confirm that the post mitigation risk meets the district risk tolerance criteria. So this would be with the development in place and also with the barrier in place. So the first few bullet points on this slide have now been addressed with the work that we'll be talking about today. So that includes in December of 2020, the baseline risk assessment report was completed. And in January of this year, the ALARQ and design options assessment was completed. ALARQ stands for as low as reasonably practicable. And this report is intended to guide the design of the mitigation strategy. And Alex will talk a little bit further about that. The IRP review letters for these two reports in March and April of this year, and they found that the work was completed to a high standard and basically meets all the requirements. And so we that signifies a pretty significant milestone in this process. So I will hand it over to Alex Strauss with BGC now to present on some of the findings of these two reports. Thank you.
Mr. Strauss, I think you're on mute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Perfect.
All right. And now you're able to see my screen.
Not yet.
Okay, try again. How about now?
Uh, yes, you can see it now.
Okay. All right. Yeah, as David said, I'm I'm Alex Strauss. I'm a geological engineer, and you probably didn't know that this was possible, but I am I am a specialist in debris flow, risk, and mitigation. There's a small handful of us. I I would, what I'll be going through today is I I hope that everybody at the end of this presentation just has a better understanding of of what the hazard here is, what the risk is, and what we're doing about it. And so I tried to keep this at a high level, just to bring everybody up to to kind of a common understanding of of the issues that we're dealing with. So the first thing to understand is that the Chikai Fan was created by debris flows, and these are debris flows that have happened over the past 15,000 years, and they happen periodically, and they will continue to happen into the future. So on this graph, and I'm not sure if I can make my pointer more visible. Maybe not. I won't try too hard, but on the right side here, you see that what's labeled as the Chikai watershed, and at the top of the watershed is Mount Garibaldi. And you can see all of this area that is eroded. And essentially, what's happening is all of the material that is in this watershed is eroding and washing down through this narrow canyon north of Alice Lake Park and forming this landform at the base that we call a fan. You can see Chekamis River flowing here from the north to the south, and you see how it it would like to go straight across this surface, but it's getting pushed out of the way by all of that sediment that used to be up here in this watershed that's now fallen down into the fan area. So at the south side of the fan is Brackendale, and at the north side is an area that we're we refer to as the confluence area. It's where the Chikai River intersects the Chekamis River. And these this is important, because these two areas are where the risk is concentrated, because that's where the development is concentrated. And the development that is proposed is here just north of Brackendale. And we'll get into it later, but the the main debris barrier site that that we are proposing is located here just to the northeast of Alice Lake Park, but outside of the park. Just an overview here of the proposed development area just north of Brackendale, around Donross Middle School, Brackendale Elementary. And this is the the fan boundary, so the area at the the bottom of the photo here is part of that alluvial fan that I mentioned, the debris flow fan. So as David mentioned, debris flow hazards at Chikai Fan have been studied since the 1950s, and they they tend to they tend to occur frequently, I think, as as many of you know, I'm sure. Every three or five years or so, we have a debris flow that travels down the Chikai River. That's what's shown here at the bottom of the screen, flowing toward the top of this the screen. And this is the Chekamis River. So this is the confluence area that I just mentioned. This is common, that you have these debris flows coming and into the Chekamis River, partially blocking Chekamis River. And this type of event is is probably going to happen more frequently as we move into the future due to climate change. Climate change will increase the the frequency and size of rainstorms, and those rainstorms will generate debris flows. So the image I just showed is is a common debris flow that occurs. And thankfully, the the capacity of this whole river system is quite high to to capture the sediment that comes down in those smaller debris flows, because the system is used to these debris flows that occur frequently. But we 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 know that larger debris flows have occurred in the past at Chikai Fan. And then we also have these events in the area that remind us that larger events are are possible. So Joffrey Peak in 2019, that this event was a very similar size to what we imagine a a large event could be at at Chikai River. In this event in particular, there there's evidence or at least a theory that it is related to climate change and the degradation of permafrost in the upper watershed. At Butte Inlet, there is an event just around Christmas or sometime in December 2020 that was quite large. And then, of course, Mount Meeger 2020 or 2010, Capricorn Creek. It's these larger events that have really, I guess, triggered the the earlier studies and concerns about hazard on on the overall Chikai Fan. David pointed to this, but I I want to emphasize that what I'm presenting on now in 2021, I I'm presenting on decades of work by many other people. I've been working on this project for about the last seven years, and and that followed all of these things, which I'll run through quite quickly. So in 1993, there is an extensive study of of hazard and risk on the Chikai Fan led by Golda and Dyerber, and that's led to the land use decisions that that the district has made thus far and the hazard maps that exists thus far. There was work in the early 2000s looking at different mitigation options. 2008, there was a really detailed assessment of the hazard, and that was reviewed by an expert panel. There was another review by a different consultants on the this hazard assessment done by Perrod Lidle and BGC. BGC was engaged by SSSD to look at conceptual barrier design back in 2014, and we've been really developing that design ever since. And as David said, in 2014, 2015, there was an expert panel that that reviewed the work that had been done to date and provided an opinion that, in their opinion, that the existing risk is too high, and regardless of if a development occurs, there would need to be something done to reduce risk to the existing development. And now here we are, presenting on the baseline risk assessment, which most of that work was done in the 2019 and 2020 timeframe. And we're currently working on the detailed design of the mitigation, which is this barrier. Chikai Fan is the most studied debris flow hazard area in Canada. It's probably the most debris flow studied debris flow hazard area in North America and and maybe the world. And and that's partially because it it's been recognized for so long that there is a high hazard there, and and it's a a landform that is very conducive to development otherwise. It's up out of the the flood plains. It's not flown prone to flooding. It's good, well-drained soils, and it's really this debris flow hazard that I think has restricted the development there. And because of that, there's there's been pressure to understand this this hazard more. And so each of these, this this outline of is the fan that I've showed in in a previous slide. And each of these little black dots is a test pit. And what a test pit is, is we have an excavator that comes and it it digs a hole that might be five meters deep and a few meters wide, 15 meters wide or so. And we look down into that test pit at the the layers that that exist. And we can recognize the the different layers. Some of them are river gravels that come from the Squamish River and Chekamis River. Others are debris flow deposits. And at the base of these debris flow deposits, we can find woody debris that was incorporated in the in the flow or or may have been, you know, an old surface here with vegetation on it that was then buried by the debris flow. And then we can de-date that debris, and then we can follow these deposits across the fan and then use that to estimate the the total volume of the event. And so on this plot here on the left, you can see shaded in gray. There's sort of a gray zone. And this is a debris flow that is about 800 years old, and it had a total volume estimated to be about 2.3 million cubic meters. What does that mean? Well, it it means a debris flow that looks pretty similar to this one at at Joffrey Peak. That was a very similar size. And this happened about 800 years ago. And and this record in the in these test pits also shows a history of other events of similar sizes and smaller sizes and larger sizes. There's also events that have come into Stump Lake, and there's been cores at the base of Stump Lake following a similar process to to date the debris flows that have come down Chikai River and overflowed into Stump Lake. I alluded to this earlier, but I I want to explain it a bit better. And and that is that small events are going to happen frequently at Chikai River. And and that's that's what we have here on the on the plot on the left. So each of these is showing the same area. Again, the Chikai Fan is about here, Brackendale at the south end, the confluence here at the north. And and these small events that happen about every five, 10, even up to 50 years, they tend to stay in this channel, and they they don't impact much development except for filling in the the confluence area, and they do pose a risk to the development that's right in this this area at the confluence. Larger events, which we have not seen in developed or historical times, might look look something like this. They would tend to stay in the channel, but they they also spill out, and and they present quite a high risk to development that's in this confluence area. And then very rare events might be large enough that they spill out and actually flow down the Highway 99 corridor around the garbage dump area and impact Brackendale, as well as the proposed development area. And I I guess one one way that this, yeah, this, these words are commonly confused is that this one in 50 years doesn't mean that this event happens every 50 years. It means that if you have a a goldfish bowl full of white balls, and let's say there's 49 white balls and one red ball, each year you pull one of the balls out. And if you pull out the red ball, that that's your year for for getting this sort of event. This 3000 year event, the same way that this this might happen, it has a one in 10,000 chance of occurrence, but that occurrence could happen this year, it could happen next year, or it could happen thousands of years from now. And and we don't know. And and that's what this whole risk management process is about, is is how do we manage this complete range of events? And that that's the challenge, and that's what we've been doing for all these years. So on this screen, I'm showing three examples of scenarios that could occur. But in the the risk assessment, and I'll show the results in just a moment here, it's actually based on 78 different hazard scenarios that we assessed. We looked at some scenarios that had a a probability of occurrence of around one in 50 years or in this range of one in 100 years. So the Y axis here is showing you the probability of of occurring in a given year. And we looked all the way out at the really the most the maximum credible events that really they have a probability of occurrence of something like one in 10 million, and we've looked at everything in between. I'm going to start at the upper left and work my way down to the lower right. So each of these graphs at the bottom, the X axis is the same in each of them. And this is just showing you the size of the events. So at the left side, we have the smallest events, and at the right side, the largest events. And that's the same on all of the graphs. On the Y axis, they change. So on the Y axis, this is showing the probability. So this is what I've just taken a minute to describe, that the lowest event, the smallest events have the highest probability of occurring in a year, and those really large events have the lowest probability of occurring. Now we move down the a graph below, we look at the consequence. So the highest consequence happens with the largest events. So the large event has a high consequence, the small event has a small consequence. In risk, which is the decision making tool that's been adopted by the district, what that is, is just multiplying these two things together, the probability of occurring times the consequence. And when you do that, you get this risk curve, and this is in terms of the number of lives that would be lost on Chikai Fan in a 100 year period. And you can see that those really frequent events that tend to stay in the channel have low risk, and that risk turns out to be tolerable. And those very rare events that cover the entire fan also have a relatively low risk, although it's got a high consequence, it's really unlikely to occur. Although it's got a high consequence, it's really unlikely to occur. So the risk is low. But what high risk is are these 100 to 300 year type of events that occur fairly frequently and can cause considerable loss of life. And this is what we're looking at is trying to yeah, understand how all of these different size events contribute to risk. And then how do we manage those events? That's our challenge. So this graph, this is showing risk based on size of the event. The next graph is just presenting similar information in a completely different way. But this is a summary of the risk at Chikai Fan. So on the on the Y axis here on the left, this is the the frequency of occurrence or the probability that something would occur. And on the X axis here is the number of fatalities. So this is the number of people that would be killed by the debris flow event. And so the more frequent events or more frequent or more likely scenario is that a small number of people are killed. And this is most likely to occur somewhere near that confluence area where those small events tend to stay in the channel. And then I forgot to mention that there's two curves here. One, the purple one is showing just the existing developments. And then the green is the existing development plus the additional proposed development, which is there north of Brackendale. And so you can see that the frequent events that are causing relatively few fatalities are really occurring in the existing development at the confluence area. And then this gap that we see here in terms of the number of fatalities that occurs at this frequency, this is caused by the additional population that is placed in the hazard zone by the proposed development. And that's what's causing this gap between the curves. And I won't go into great detail yet on what the lines below are, but essentially if the risk is plotting above this diagonal line, it's unacceptable. And the district has decided, following the recommendation of an expert panel, that the risk needs to be reduced and brought into this ALARP zone. And that's what I'll explain later here is how do we show that risk is as low as reasonably practicable, which is what this acronym stands for. So that's the group risk side. And the other piece that we look at is the individual risk. So this is the the risk that an individual resident has of dying in a debris flow from Chikai Fan. And the district has adopted two criteria. So for existing development, they've adopted the criteria that risk to an individual needs to be less than one in 10,000. So that's saying that the blue things here are showing you other types of hazards. So COVID in the USA, the risk of dying from COVID last year was about one in 1,000. The risk of dying in a motor vehicle accident is about one in 10,000. And this has been the level that has been adopted by the district for existing development. We're saying that if you're going to live on the fan in the existing development, your risk should be less than it would be from dying in a motor vehicle accident. But for the new development, they chose the threshold of one in 100,000. And that's similar to the risk of drowning. And again, both of these parameters or criteria came from a recommendation of an earlier expert panel. And what this shows is that the risk to existing development is too high. It's above the thresholds and therefore mitigation is needed. And it also shows that the risk to the proposed development is too high and therefore mitigation is needed. I want to spend a minute to describe what this as low as reasonably practicable means. Because this is really what is controlling the design. It's controlling the size of the structure, the height of the structure. It's controlling in some ways the operations and maintenance costs that I'm sure will be the focus of future discussions. As low as reasonably practicable, it means that the risk shall be reduced until the cost of further risk reduction is grossly disproportionate to the benefit gained. And so this is the same chart that I showed a moment ago. The existing risk prior to mitigation is this green line in this case. And then after mitigation with what we've proposed, we are reducing the risk down to the solid blue line. And it's in the ALARP zone. And what this FN plot means is that when you're in the unacceptable zone, you should really reduce risk without regard for cost. But once that risk is into this ALARP zone in the yellow zone here, you keep reducing until it's grossly disproportionate. So that costs are grossly disproportionate to benefits. And that's what we've had to show. So how do we show that? Well, we've adopted what is done in the dams world. So you know, there's, there are many dams all over the world, including across BC that are large and they're located upstream from populations. And so they manage dams in the same way where they try to show that the risk is as low as reasonably practicable and they have a framework for doing that. And there's three, there's other ways, there's other pieces, but the three main items are that you need to show that with your dam or in our case, our debris flow structure, that we're following good practice. And I'll try to show you that we believe we are. Secondly, you need to show that your, what you're doing is cost effective. And then thirdly, that this question of grossly disproportionate, you need to show that the cost of further risk reduction would be grossly disproportionate to the benefits. And so the cost effectiveness is basically the cost of the mitigation divided by the lives saved. And there are some thresholds at which we do spend too much on risk reduction. And I'll give an example of that. And that comes from, I'm sure that all of us have gone to a car rental agency to rent a car and you you book your car online for, say, $50 a day and you show up at the rental agency and they say, well, it's $50 a day, but what sort of insurance do you want to buy? And they tell you that the insurance is going to be another $50 a day. And I think many of us probably turned down that insurance many times or portions of the insurance. Or at the very least, we don't purchase the most expensive insurance because we recognize, you know, that we're willing to take the risk and you can't spend all of your money to reduce risk. There actually is a threshold. Transportation agencies do this, like we could choose to make our highways safer, but we don't have the money to to reduce all of the different risks that we face. And so there's this concept of the value of safety risk reduction. And there's a whole departments and economics departments in schools that try to establish this value. And they look at things like how much money do we spend on guardrails on our highways? And how much money do we spend on bicycle helmets? And how does that equate to the number of lives saved? And this sets a threshold of what is a reasonable value to spend. And we're trying to show that we're, say, three, four, five or 10 times, we're spending three, four, five or maybe 10 times more than this value in the mitigation of risks at the Chikai Fan. So now I'm moving more specifically into the mitigation. David mentioned this and I breezed by this when I showed the timeline, but the mitigation that we've arrived at is following years of options comparisons where we've looked at really brainstorm, started with brainstorm lifts to what could we possibly do to reduce risk at Chikai Fan? And we've gone through item by item and really exhaustively tried to rule out the options that don't fit. And we've arrived at this debris basin as a best option. So just to give you a sense of other things that we've looked at, I'll start down here on the fan. In the early 2000s and even until recently, there's been studies of diversion berms on the fan. And those have by and large been rejected as a means to mitigate the entire fan because they they aren't able to protect the whole fan and they transfer risk. So you can imagine if a flow comes down and hits this berm, the risk is transferred to this area on the northern portion of the fan, although the berm could protect Brackendale. We've looked at a variety of basin and berm or basin and barrier locations. And the point of the barrier is to capture the debris. And we've looked at a few different locations. And this is the one that we've arrived on in the end. We've looked at going up into the watershed and trying to reduce the probability that a debris flow would occur. And we've really decided that's not a feasible thing to do because of the scale of the watershed. And we've also looked at slope stability monitoring, so trying to recognize large events that are initiating in the upper watershed and correcting them or managing them or reacting to them before they turn into a large landslide. And I think that piece of slope monitoring will probably be incorporated as well into the overall risk management plan.
Mr. Stroth, I just want to do a little bit of time check.
Yep.
I see you to think about another 10 minutes and then start going into questions.
Yeah, that's good. I was planning to wrap up in about five minutes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yep. So the debris flow barrier upstream of Alice Lake Park, it was selected as the best option. The reasons are because it protects the entire fan. It protects the confluence area as well as Brackendale. It protects Alice Lake Park. And both the so the environmental, from environmental impacts as well as safety impacts to people in the park. It's located outside of the park. So the the structure comes near the boundary, but it doesn't cross the boundary into the park. It has a much smaller footprint than some of the options we looked at. It allows sediment to pass downstream. So that the design is this barrier that restricts the size of the flow that's able to pass through it. And I'll show you a video in just a couple of minutes that illustrates that right at the end. It uses a natural basin that's there and it does have an ability to capture very large, very rare events. So here's an overview just showing the location of the barrier just outside of Alice Lake Park. And this is the natural basin that we're taking advantage of. And then here's just a few images to give you a sense of what it might look like. You'll notice that this image is different from the one I showed two slides ago. And that's because we are in the middle of the detailed design phase and the details of the barrier are changing. And so each of these images that I'm showing is from a different stage of the design. And the next one that you see, if we present again, will probably be a bit different from these. But it'll have all the same components, which is there's a barrier across the valley with an opening that lets the normal river pass through and a spillway so that when this basin fills, the flow spill over the spillway. Another image here. And this is a video of a very simple physical model that we've set up to aid our design. And it just demonstrates how it works. It's not rocket science. This is the barrier here. You can kind of see the opening through the barrier. This is where the Chikai River would be flowing naturally. And then when I hit play here, you'll see the debris flow intersect the barrier. So you can see the flow is mostly stopped by the barrier, but then some of the flow continues through. And I'll let it for a minute more. You notice the flow. So you notice the flow carrying through. So what we're doing is we're taking this this flow that had a very large volume traveling downstream rapidly. And we're restricting the volume that can go downstream. And it's very much the same as flattening the curve. So we have a very steep discharge coming downstream and we're trying to flatten that over a long time period. In reality, this would eventually become blocked with woody debris and boulders. And the flow would stop through the, from the barrier of the debris, but then the river would continue on top and through the opening. And then a portion of this or much of this would need to be removed after an event. The river, when you remove the blockage at the opening, the river would be able to cut down and carry much of the material downstream. But a significant portion from the basin would need to be removed with heavy equipment. And there's a plan for that. So we have, in designing this, we've looked around the world and we have engaged really the most experienced debris flow specialists from around the world. And that includes Los Angeles County where they have dozens of these types of barriers. Although rarely with the river going through, there tend to be in dry creek beds. We've looked to Europe where there's again thousands of structures, Japan where there's thousands of structures and Hong Kong where there's dozens of smaller structures. And the barrier that we've designed in the end is really most similar to what's constructed in Japan. Again, where there are thousands of structures and a very well-established method for designing them. And we've also engaged specialists from British Columbia. And that's this independent review panel that David mentioned. And these folks that are on the review panel have been involved in the design of all of the other structures that are in this area. So in summary, our proposed barrier, it's going to be constructed of roller compacted concrete. It's going to be about 25 meters high. The outlet that I showed is about six meters wide. And this allows the normal river flows to pass and also helps to clean the barrier or remove sediment from the basin after an event. It has a storage capacity of about 2.5 million cubic meters. And that's similar to that Joffrey Peak slide. And it's also similar to the volume of B C Place Stadium. And similar to that garbage dump debris flow that I showed that filled most of the central fan area. And the design event that we've selected to meet the risk tolerance thresholds has a chance of about 1% chance of occurring in the next 50 years. And that's similar to a 3,000 to 10,000 year return period. We're just now working on detailed design. We plan to have that complete late this year. And we're moving more into looking at the details of the outlet design, trying to manage the trade off between operations and maintenance costs and risk. And we're working on our design drawings, which will be needed for permitting. That's the end of my presentation. I guess I'll stop sharing.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Alson, do you have anything to add before I go to counsel?
Nope. Thank you.
Okay, counsel, any questions? So I see Counsel Ray, then Counsel Anderson, I'm still looking. Counsel Ray, Anderson, that's for Mayor.
Thank you. That was actually a great presentation and another one in a series that I've been watching now for about the last six or seven years. But this one actually kind of laid it out. It seemed just a little bit better than others. But it raised a couple of questions. And so initially, when I became aware of this project, when I was first on council in 2008 and we started started looking at the possibility of designing or putting a subdivision here. At that time, there was these series of levels of area one, two, three and four for risk. And it was able to be, we were told, for this particular development area able to be controlled by a berm, much like the one that runs in behind the schools now. It was built when the schools were there. And then from a layman's perspective, so that was the first kind of scenario. From a layman's perspective, it changed significantly when the Mount Meeger slide came down. And all of a sudden, the line of debris went right practically, as one of the early slides showed, right out to the dike around Brackendale, down by Fisherman's Park in that area. I mean, it could, you know, obviously lesser depths, but it had to be ability in a significant event to get down that far. And now your mapping shows that that line, the fan extends not all the way down there, but more or less halfway or a third of the way through Brackendale. And so I was wondering if you could explain that, where we think the risk sort of starts and stops. And because it makes a difference for us in considering future development in an area that is within or without this debris flow issue.
Yeah, that's a great question. So a couple of things. One is that one of the outcomes of the work, which I didn't mention, I should have, is that there will be a residual hazard map. So the map that you're referring to that was created in the mid 1993, I guess, by that Thirberg-Golder work, that is still valid. All of the work that we've done on hazard and risk assessment hasn't really changed the basic conclusions of that map for the current situation. And so so that's one piece. And then the next piece is when the barrier is constructed, that map will need to be updated because barrier is constructed, there will that map will need to be updated because, of course, that barrier is going to reduce the hazard at all areas of the fan. So that's one piece. Another piece is that the lines that I was showing shows the end of the fan boundary, and that's that's probably a bit esoteric. I guess it maybe doesn't matter to anybody but a geologist. The end of the fan boundary is where the coarse sediment is likely to settle out of the flow. But of course, the flow is water, so it doesn't just stop when it gets to where the coarse sediment settles out. It continues on downstream. And so when you look at a model, the model will show that there's impacts beyond the fan, and yes, that's true. But as you mentioned, the the impacts are going to be lesser because they aren't carrying the sediment. And so it's the hazard map that we create in the end, and that was that exists from 1993. I think that's really what you should be looking at for your land use decisions, not the fan boundary that we show on places.
Thank you. In the second, I've got two other questions here. The second is with respect to the debris flow mapping for public use, which is one of the conditions. And we had a proposal a couple of years ago for an industrial function in the business, not in the business park, in the fan area, more or less in the area around B C Hydro's substation. And there was some discussion at that time that that particular spot was actually not in the direct line of the flow because of its elevation. And we could consider resoning it, for example. But that didn't conclude, and the opponent went away. But I'm wondering if we now have because it's one of the conditions of third reading, if we now have mapping of the fan that shows even right now what areas might be available for some form of development like industrial, not residential versus others that we have to wait for the barrier to be built. Do we have that kind of mapping available now?
Well, so we we have information. But the maps are not together, and me and that's kind of part of this project is is assessing the hazard doing the mitigation. But for at this moment, we don't have an updated map. Maybe David could could comment on that where we're at there.
Through the chair, I mean, there are there have been a wide variety of scenarios that have been modeled. And we have seen those. So I think maybe what hasn't been done is to create a composite map that that shows the combination of all the the different potential events that could occur. But but those scenarios have been modeled, and that was used in the risk assessment because that determined that shows what degree hazard can occur in what different areas of the fan. The district does not yet own that. That is a condition of adoption. So at this point, SSSD owns that information. And but I think the information is out there. The baseline work that has been completed does give us that information.
Thank you. And finally, and it's just a little bit off topic, and maybe it's our staff that that can help us. But one of the concerns at third reading and previous discussions, when you're trying to put a maintenance budget together, as you point out, you know, it might be a one in 500 year risk. But that could be next year as a and it could even happen 10 years after that. And so the question that came up in council discussions previously was, you know, if we start this program with with sharing the cost of this and you'd expect common sense would tell you to be setting aside a reserve for a future maintenance project. What happens if there's a significant event in the first 15, 20, 25 years? And how would the district ever cover that? And there's been different solutions discussed like insurance and so forth. And I'm just wondering if if staff have made any progress along that line for that particular concern.
Through the chair, I had a discussion about this exactly with John Matthews, President of SSSD just last week. So I understand that they have looked into insurance. There are significant costs of purchasing that insurance sort of in the range of $1 to $200,000 per year. So it is a significant cost. But it is something that's being considered, and it would be likely to include that in the first decade or possibly more while we're building up that reserve. So it's sort of a would potentially act as a stopgap until we have a sufficient reserve that we could use to clean out a large event that could occur sort of in those early years while we are building the reserve. There is further work that's required on that to confirm whether we would go with insurance. But it is a consideration at this point.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And I'll go to Counsel Anderson. Before I do, just remind people, we have B C Transit coming at five after one, so we have to be back here starting by five after one. Because I'll go to Counsel Anderson.
Very good. I'll try to be concise here. It would be great to have a copy of Mr. Suh's slide presentation if that isn't already available. Just throw that out there. It was very informative. I have toured the area about a year ago, and I wanted to ask Mr. Rolston if it may be appropriate and possible to arrange a council tour. I'm not aware if the previous council made such a tour. My impression on visiting the general area is that there are because of the scale and because of the implications of what we're talking about here. This is a terribly important topic for council. Visiting the site, you get an impression of a number of things. A couple of things come up for me. The enormous erosion on the right bank of the Chikai adjacent Cat Lake Park recreation site, and that erosion, you can, we had a or not we, but there was a railway bridge crossing the river just on the northeast side of the power lines, and you wouldn't be able to tell where on earth that was because the erosion is so great. So I haven't seen, I don't see a lot of discussion in there. Of course, I'm not an engineer in these reports regarding that. But you and you get the impression of the scale of the maintenance issue or issues in plural from visiting that site. These are important for council to consider. And it also, I was there when the logging contractors were working under the power line, and that's a very, very steep hill to work from if that will be the one that will be used for access for maintenance. So just throwing that out, Mr. Rolston, whether a tour might be arranged for council. I I really do advise my colleagues that it would be very informative. I, in sections, in particular in the K W L report for the district, section 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3, and I'll read briefly from 6.3. The issues of what we do now for planning, and Counsel Ray has touched on some of these issues. But considerations under 6.3, a proposed new development does not proceed. Well, we have provision in our O C P for developments to make applications if they're not permanent structures, if the zoning is in place and so forth. Well, we have people lining up to do so. The forestry land strategy that is in the O C P is nothing new. All of those ideas and proposals were put together over 20 years ago, and some of those needs in that forestry land strategy, and that's just one sector, are really pressing. We don't know where else to locate them. And this includes receiving and sorting of materials down to processing. We had, we had, and we could have gone in or the industry locally could have gone into the business of chipping during the strike two, a year and a half ago, that kind of thing. So it really is a concern to me, and maybe I'm just registering the concern that we be able to undertake that planning for at least those types of activities that don't require permanent structures and for which the zoning is essentially in place. So you have or through Mr. Counsel Ray's exchange there, we touched on the issue of priority information. Well, I think that this is very important topic because we have also developed our concepts coming through town that are large, the Chikai Fan Recreation Facility Concepts. And I mean, I'm sure stat they visited through staff, but we need to have an overall plan. The O C P outlines undertaking a subarea plan for the Chikai Fan. Obviously, that needs to take into consideration the the residential development and the the mitigation strategy, of course. So that may be premature. But I am here, Chair, just passing on that concern that we really do need to make some some headway on finding, putting together a map of what's going to go where, and that includes the airport and the plans for the airport. Thank you. I'll leave it for that.
Okay, thank you. I'll go to Counsel Herbert and then Mayor.
Thank you. And yes, thank you for the the presentation. Reading through all the the provided documents, the that your explanation of of risk, actually, I found quite quite helpful because those those charts are unnerving to the to uninitiated. And having, this is maybe the third or fourth time I've I've seen them, but I'm not yet comfortable with those. So those that was great context. So thank you. Seeing as we're in detailed design of the actual structure, I have some questions about sort of what's being considered there. Earlier in the process, I believe it was at public hearing, I heard there was talk of access over the top of the structure to allow access to what could potentially be the the fifth lakes of the Four Lakes Trail and access to CAT across there. In the examples in all the examples given and all the images, I didn't see access across the top and any of the other structures. Is this something that's still being considered as part of your detailed design?
Yes, it is being considered, and there's nothing precluding putting a bridge across the top of the structure. One other thing that's not shown in those images that we're moving towards now is is bars potentially in the structure as well. So yeah, there's a lot of details not shown, and the bridge is one of them.
Okay, thank you. And I'm curious about the construction and maintenance access. Is it crucial that it comes from, is will there be access from both sides? Like, is this road improvements on both sides and has sort of routing of those? I mean, you know, where are we at? And where are you at in that?
Yeah, that
piece of it.
That's that has been a focus of our work over the past month or two. The initial plan was to provide access, road access from both sides. But as I'm sorry, I missed the name of the previous speaker or councillor member, but we are struggling to design a stable road from the Cat Lake side, as was pointed out. And so I think I think it's an open question still. And at the moment, I we're moving towards having permanent access from the south side only and having the bridge across the crest. But it is it is still an open question.
Okay, thank you. Is I'm just trying to prioritize my notes here, but I I think we're all operating under the the goal of of reaching a risk that's suitable for not only the community that already exists in the hazard, but these future residential. Do we feel that, I'm just wondering if any land use changes are going to be recommended to drop the risk from a quantitative and I I know that we're shooting towards this 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 development, and we're at third reading with that, but should we not be able to achieve the the reasonable risk? Is that an output of this of this work, or are we?
Well, I may be misunderstanding the question, but with the barrier that we're proposing, we achieve the tolerable risk quite quite readily. It's it's not, it's not at the boundary. We're well within the in the tolerable zone. So I I don't see there being a a risk of the the residual risk being too high when we finish the detailed design. I'm not sure if that was your question.
Yeah, I think we both used risk too many times there. But yeah, we're, yeah, that that does satisfy. Thank you. That's good for now, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, next, I'll go to Mayor Elliot, and I'll put myself on the list.
How does the advent of climate change get incorporated to the risk over time? So we, you said earlier that Joffrey is showed signs, the Joffrey slide, that it was due to melting permafrost up high. How does our risk or can that impact the A L R P as as our global temperature increases for this watershed?
Yeah, so we have incorporated climate change considerations throughout the process. And so the the risk results that we're presenting are including climate change considerations. So so they are valid for the, say, the next 50 years of of climate. The effect of climate change most likely is to increase the frequency of events that occur. The size of the events, since we've designed such a large barrier, the size of the events are are very likely to still be small enough that they're retained by the barrier. So the effect is probably more on the operations and maintenance costs rather than on risk to residents.
Okay. There's a couple of things in in your staff report. Mr. Rolston, a couple of bullets which speak to watershed monitoring and removal or relocation of high risk structures near the Chikai and Chakmas Confluence. So I'm just curious about that because the slide said we're designing for the 3,000 to 10,000 type of event. Or return period kind of event. So that means a lot of the smaller events can get through, but they still impact risk to life at the confluence. And so what is, what does that mean, that bullet point? What are next steps in relation to that bullet point?
Thank you. Through the chair. So I'll start with the watershed monitoring first, and Alex can chime in if I miss anything here, but that was considered as a low cost needs of mitigating risk, you know, to to incorporate some kind of aerial monitorings of the slopes to see if there's any changes. It could potentially be a precursor to indicate whether there's an imminent instability in that slope that could could come down, and that that has been used in other jurisdictions throughout the world, and they have used that for predicting. So basically, it's a relatively low cost way that we can, thing that we can incorporate into mitigation strategy. And going back to the A L R assessment and looking at the cost and the potential reduction in risk, that's was one of the lowest costs and therefore kind of one of the most cost efficient ways of potentially mitigating risk. With respect to developments at the confluence, that is an area that does require further consideration as we proceed with the detailed design of the barrier. There's a lot of trade offs with the size of the opening in the barrier. The larger the size, the more debris can pass through, so therefore there's a greater risk downstream. But on the other hand, the larger the the size of that opening, the less debris gets caught up and therefore needs to be removed upstream of that barrier, and that's really going to be a significant contributor to maintenance costs. Is how much do we have to get in there with machines and be cleaning that material out and disposing it? And so the it's very likely that even with construction of the barrier, that there will be residual risks at the confluence. And I would say at this point, it's just been flagged as an issue and a trade off that needs to be considered. And I think at this point, the plan is to continue with the detailed design of the barrier and to have that discussion as part of kind of finalizing the design, confirming what is the size of the barrier, what is the resulting downstream risk? And and ultimately, that that's going to be a council decision to to make considering all of these trade offs of residual risks and operations and maintenance costs.
Okay. And then the next bullet point said it's likely justified to reduce the overtopping protection of the barrier. What what is that bullet point in reference to? Because there's a spillway there, obviously. I heard that, but why this bullet point in our report?
I'd like to hand this one to Alex that I could speak to, and I think he might give you a better response than I would.
Yeah, I can speak to it. I mentioned that in Japan, there are thousands of debris flow barriers in in the Alps in Europe. There are also thousands of debris flow barriers. And all of those barriers, or if not all, 99.99%, are designed to resist something like a 100 year or 200 year return period event. And so they are intended that they will be overtopped multiple times within their design life. And so much of the design is all around managing that overtopping and ensuring that the barrier is not damaged too much by the overtopping so that it can be put back into service life very soon after. At this project, this site, uh, we're designing for a one in three thousand to one in ten thousand year event. And so um, it's much it overtopped much less frequently. And so our design criteria is that it needs to survive overtopping without collapse, but it's tolerable that the that it will need to be repaired following the overtopping. And that's part of the operation and maintenance funding plan is is to develop uh, funding that would allow the district to rehabilitate the structure after it's overtopped rather than invest that money upfront to ensure it's say, overtopping proof the way many structures are constructed now.
Thanks, Mr. Struth. And just a procedural question for the corporate officer. Once we have detailed design and once we have the operations and maintenance sort of proposed, does that then require us to have a new public hearing? Because it's basically adding to our knowledge? Or did did we account for that by listing all these things as conditions of adoption?
Mr. Valas.
Through you, Chair. We accounted for the for the the detail work to come forward after the third reading and before adoption. So we're still within the boundaries of that public hearing that was last held.
Bye. Okay.
So there were a number of assumptions that were made at the public hearing that the details will be coming forward. And as long as what the details are revealing are in line with those assumptions, which at this point, we've looked that, you know, we've reviewed it, the reports from that perspective. It seems that we're still in line with the assumptions that were made at that point.
But if council feels that those assumptions haven't been met, then we could go to public hearing again.
That's right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll go to Councilor.
Thank you. Through the chair, many of my colleagues have already asked my questions, so that's great. But just to pick up on one that Mayor Elliott was asking and for clarification, the watershed monitoring, can I maybe suggest that that would be akin or help facilitate like an early warning system downstream? Is that correct?
Great.
Correct, yes.
Yes.
That's helpful. Thank you. And then a very simple question. Have we thought about what we do with the material behind the barrier when we need to dispose of it?
Through the chair, we have been, the SSSD has been examining potential disposal sites and they have identified some crown land that could potentially be used in a relatively close vicinity. Yeah, so that it it's been identified, it hasn't been finalized at this point, but they're they're pursuing discussions with with the province about that.
I can also, I can also just add that the the operations and maintenance components are really what is the focus of all of our current design work. So it's not something that we are overlooking. It's it's actually what we spend most of our time thinking about. How do we facilitate operations and maintenance of the structure?
Thank you. I I have a couple of questions, just risk-based and touched on some of the answers, but I'm not fully clear. In the report, I I read that the risk to someone not in the building is much higher and that we only focused on assessing risk in terms of people in buildings. You know, there has been discussion about of all sorts of outdoor activities out of business or recreation. And so this left me wondering, do we have enough information to know what level of those business or rec and other opportunities are are tolerable once this barrier has built been built, or do we need to do a bit more work to understand that?
I can answer that. I don't know if, David, if you're.
Yeah, go ahead, Alex.
Okay. I guess first I'll just say that people outside of buildings are protected just as well as people inside of buildings. So so the mitigation is effective to protect people inside and out. Another thing I'll say is that after we complete the design, we'll prepare a residual hazard map. And that residual hazard map will show across the entire fan the likely recurrence interval as well as flow depth and flow velocity hitting all areas of the fan. And that's unrelated to to risk, it's just showing what what the hazard is. And so that can be used to make land use decisions. And then the 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 reason that the risk assessment was focused on life loss to people within buildings is because that FN criteria, the the plot that I showed that had the the diagonal line and the curve was developed for people within buildings. And so that whole system is really just a decision-making tool that helped us to size the structure. And that that's why we focused on people within buildings, but it doesn't, you know, make it so that the mitigation is unusable to people outside.
Okay.
Could I add one thing to that as well?
Please.
I just wanted to add as well, so if there is a proposed outdoor use, all the mapping that's being developed, the debris flow mapping and the modeling work, that can all be used to complete a site-specific hazard assessment. So well, it hasn't been considered in this in this baseline risk assessment work that's been completed to date. There's no reason why we can't build and use the information that that's already been developed and to complete a site-specific development for, you know, any proposed future outdoor type of use.
Okay, thank you. And somewhat related, once this is all said and done, is this getting us to a level of tolerable risk for just the sort of specific project that initiated this as well as the existing development? Or, you know, thinking about some of our discussions about more density is for transit and so on? Does this permit us to go somewhat significantly beyond the proposed density so far?
Through the chairs, so the work that's being completed today is to to reach the ALAR zone for existing and proposed developments. Within our official community plan, we have policy that says, once we've adopted a mitigation strategy, that we will develop a a development control plan. So that will figure out what what can be done, what sort of scale of development can occur on the Chikai Fan while still ensuring that we're meeting our risk tolerance criteria. So I think there is potential definitely to include further developments on the Chikai Fan in the future. It hasn't been evaluated at this point, but you know, just based on looking at where the line is in the ALAR curve, there does seem to be a little bit of room there. So I think further development will be possible, but we need to develop a strategy to ensure that we're we're still meeting our risk tolerance criteria.
Right. I would just add to that, if I if I may, that that will look at the entire fan and also look at various uses. So for example, if we're looking at community-wide risk of loss of life, having very concentrated residential development in in an area on on the sort of riskier parts of the fan may not be the best use of that land, which it may be better used for heavy industrial employment lands, for for example. So that that will be the sort of sort of trade-off look. Once we have that post-construction hazard mapping, that's that's the exact work that we'll be working with the community and with council on.
Okay, thank you. And then just a a final question. I was thinking in my mind about an earthquake, whereas, you know, that's seemingly the one certain hazard where it doesn't just start a debris flow, but actually could compromise the structure big enough. It's bigger, big earthquake, big debris flow and takes up the structure. But looking at, you know, am I to understand correctly that while that may be true and the consequence would be high, the likelihood is still relatively speaking so low that's not where our concern is, where we're trying to focus with this. We're we're still just needing to focus on smaller, more frequent events and that's still where the hazard is greatest?
I I think your intuition is is exactly right, that that the most likely thing that will initiate this large event is is a an earthquake. And that that is the the basis for our design is that we we look at load cases affecting the barrier and then we design it to be stable under those load cases. And so one load case is a one in twenty-four seventy-five earthquake. And then we assume that that earthquake triggers a large debris flow. So the structure needs to be able to retain that large debris flow following the earthquake. And then when the the barrier is completely full of debris, we assume that a a one in four seventy-five earthquake impacts the structure and it needs to be stable with all of the debris behind it. And so we are looking at those load cases.
Okay, thank you. I'll go to Councilor Race and then.
Thank you. And just quickly to staff, and I'm just curious, I mean, we had third reading. It's going back almost four years now and I'm wondering where staff think we are in the rezoning process and how close we are to being able to consider adoption.
Can I ask?
I'll answer once.
Bellis is to respond to that?
There are still, this is, this work is part of the adoption conditions. But it's not, we're, I I don't think we're we're close yet to addressing all of those conditions. So there are a lot of details that will, the this work will allow to progress in in terms of meeting the other conditions. So I I can't really comment on how far away we are without, um, you know, a comprehensive analysis of the outstanding conditions. But this work will be informing other things that we have to work on with Matthew Southwest or Matthew West.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thanks. So it looks like we're looking for a motion to receive the report and assessment. That's race moves. Anderson seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, anyone opposed? Oh, sorry, Counselor Action, did you have a?
Yes, if I may, just quickly, Chair, I did make the suggestion of a tour. I'd like to elaborate that that tour should consider participation of Squamish Nation council members. Not only are the landowner, development partners and inhabiting the risk zones in the margins of the Chikai Fan, but they are also, their business arm is the largest stakeholder in a forestry land strategy for the Chikai Fan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is that a called question? Anyone opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Okay, thank you very much. It's a really interesting reading for the weekend. Appreciate it. And we will come back at five after one, Chair. It's a short recess. Thank you. Well, welcome back everyone from a quick lunch. And we'll jump right back into it with a discussion about a transit maintenance facility. I'll do it over, I think, to Ms. Dunn. And I'm just wondering if you can just clarify for us what sort of feedback you're looking to us for, I gather it's mostly around any scope. If you could just clarify that to keep us focused.
Great, thank you. So good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Dora Gunn, a transportation planner with the District of Squamish. We have two PC Transit staff with us here today, James Wadsworth, who is a project development manager, and Rama Ringma, who is a senior manager of government relations. So we are just looking for an endorsement on the scope today, uh, not budget or or anything else at this point, just the scope of the facility. So James is going to provide a presentation on the facility and I'll hand it over to him now.
Thank you for inviting us here today. We're we're excited to to talk about sharing, sharing this presentation and potentially moving forward with the community on planning for a facility. I'm just sharing my screen here. One second. Here we go. I made it. Just checking that people can see that, maybe one person just say, give me a thumbs up.
I can see it. Thank you.
Okay, great. So the the objective here is to provide some information on transit facility planning activities and as 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 Dora can mention, some endorsement of the scope of the project. So I'll just give you a little bit of background information first, an update on transit facility planning, and then our project development process, how do we move from, you know, a vision or a plan to to a real project and as part of that is next steps. Okay, just all right, just some context on the strategic plans. Really, you know, the type of facility that we're we're looking at is based on the direction in in strategic plans. Of course, the official community plan where transit is a preferred mode. And also, there's a number of supportive transit policies. In the Community Climate Action Plan, it speaks to increasing transit ridership and transit mode share and the decarbonize, carbonization of of transportation. We do, the community does have a transit future plan that's being updated as an action plan right now that has a vision for for service levels and how we serve the community into the future. And the provincial government has asked PC Transit to develop a low-carbon fleet program so that we can transition to zero emissions electric propulsion vehicles. There's a picture of a of a test vehicle that we had in the Victoria Transit System a year or so ago, just as a a pilot project, just to look, take a close look at the technology. A little bit of background here, we have an existing transit operation center for bus maintenance and storage and office space for the transit system on production way. We have a fleet of eleven buses. The existing facility is leased from the operating company. It has three maintenance bays. And they're they're in tight now for parking buses on site. If we're looking at expansion in the future, my understanding is is some space has been leased nearby in a parking lot that has room for up to to eight buses in the future and it has a lease till twenty thirty. To develop, you know, what do we need for the transit facility? We did some work on forecasting what the future fleet could be based on the the community strategies and the transit future plan. We we looked at what the population would be in the next twenty-five years and our understanding is just over thirty thousand people. And so we need to have enough service for a community of that size. We looked at what do other transit systems of that size have for a fleet? And and we look at, you know, service hours per per capita and transit systems with good levels of service that get those mode shares that we're looking for, that get people onto the bus. Usually have about one point five to two hours of service per capita. And so we can work backwards from there and forecast, well, if we have, you know, fifty thousand hours of service in the future, how many buses, how many buses do we need to to do that? So that's how we came up with these these fleet projections of of needing potentially twenty-five buses by in fifty years and and forty buses. But we we want to make sure that with a, when you're planning a facility like this, that we have enough room to support expansion now in the future and perhaps a little past that. So, you know, when we're looking at a facility, we're planning for a fifty-bus facility because we don't want to get into a position where we've we've only a plan for thirty buses and then need to to build another facility. That usually doesn't make a lot of sense. We we wanted to to make sure that we are planning for enough room that we can support service levels in the future that are reasonable and support the community at their goals. I think I already mentioned that, you know, the the province would like us to convert all of our diesel buses to battery electric buses by by twenty forty. So that, you know, we need to have a facility that can support that conversion to battery electric bus. So that, you know, we need to have a facility that can support that conversion to battery electric bus. The good news out there is that over the last few years, the federal government has significantly increased their funding for, for transit projects. And so this program has bumped up the federal share to 40% of, of capital projects for things like construction of facilities or transit exchanges, things that we can capitalize. And the province is matching that 40. And so we're getting the local government share down to approximately 20% of these projects, which is a really, really good deal. There's some types of projects that aren't eligible for ISOP. And one of them is the cost for property acquisition. And so we still have to share those at our traditional funding rate, which is approximately 53% for the local government and 47% for BC Transit. With the operations maintenance facility plan, we've done a, a, a quick study to understand what our functional requirements are that we need for the future to support that type of fleet. And, you know, how we could potentially phase and what, what a strategy would cost us. This is a picture of, of a facility that we've just recently built in the last couple of years in Campbell River. And then there's some of the charging equipment that we, we might need for battery electric buses there. Our, with our functional planning, this is just a functional design layout theoretically. These are the, the pieces that we need to make a transit yard. For this, this number of buses, we approximately need a five acre site. The building needs to be about 2,600 square meters. We have the maintenance bays and rooms for storage for all the parts. Administration will need a service island to clean the buses. We'll need a bus wash as well for exterior cleaning. We'll need battery electric bus charging equipment on site. This is a, a overhead charger. You can see a bus up here next to a charger where the bus connects to it to get their charge. We're, we're doing overnight charging right now when we're developing these facilities. There's room for customer parking, a bus parking. And, and when we, we design our facilities, we're, we're designing them to be lead gold and go through a safe design certification process. And we wouldn't build all of it at once because it wouldn't be required. So we potentially build it in two phases with an additional 400 square meters of, of space for the building once we get laid over 25 buses. Now, the costs that we're looking at for this facility in 2020, $20, $21 are approximately $25 million for the first phase. And a future phase could be just over $6 million. And so these are our construction, our construction costs that align with the potential for the growth. There would also be additional costs on top of this for, for land. Any site development costs for the land and any development cost charges. See if we needed to provide an amenity such as a new intersection or other amenity as, as required through, through development services. The funding options for, for this would be, we've, as I've mentioned earlier, we have the, the, the option around ISOP funding to bring the local share down to approximately 20, 20%. And this, the local government share could be funded through release fee that's paid as part of your annual operating agreement. So you don't have to pay for, for it all at once. And it would be amortized over the, the life of the facility. So that could be approximately 30, 30 years for, for a lease fee. And the project costs for this type of project for the construction side of it, the local government wouldn't be charged anything until the project was in service in the future. So there aren't, there aren't upfront costs on the construction side of the facility. And the local government could, as we said, fund that's through the AOA or potentially a one-time contribution if they chose to do so. We've done that with Abbotsford on some transit exchange stuff as they'd already planned in their capital budget for a transit exchange. And so their preference was to pay at one time. It could be in, in cash. In some cases, local governments may contribute land as part of their share to the project. As I mentioned earlier, the property costs are not ISOP eligible when we understand what those could be in the future. There's a couple of slides here on, on the project development part of it. Cause there's, you know, we kind of work with local governments to do, I guess, progressive approvals where, you know, we start out where we agree to do studies to understand what we need to build and what it might cost. Then, once we agree to that, we might sign what we call an MOU or a project term sheet for the, the construction side of it. And that allows us to go forward and make a business, do a business case to, to, to receive the provincial funding and make an application to the federal government. And if we have all parties, once we've gone through that business case process, when we have all parties on side, then quite often there'll be a federal announcement with the local governments that we have a project moving forward. And then we would sign the project agreement, which is more of a, a detailed legal agreement on, on what we're building and when and how it's going to be delivered. And this, this process can take several years to do because there's lots of planning to do, business case development. Of course, there's, you know, tendering the project, the acquisition of properties. And so our, our experience is that as we built these with other communities, the process can take between three to five years. And as we move forward, we'll get a more accurate schedule and will increase our level of accuracy on the budget and the costs. But to do this, it's a coordinated effort. You know, we'd be working with district staff to develop and move this forward. We'd be working, we'd be checking in with council and, and staff and getting approvals. As we move forward, we would have to get approval, as I said, from the BC Transit Board through a business case. And then we'd have to make that federal application. So some of the next steps that we would be working with you to take together potentially would be making sure that, that both parties are identifying funding in their capital, long-term capital plans. So we can schedule this project. Of course, as part of this, we would need to be developing an agreement around the land and working to, together to finalize that part of it. And as I mentioned, agreeing to the scope so that we could develop a business case. There, there could be more studies that we need to do before we're ready to do that. I think I've mentioned the business case and ISOP approval. And so, so when we're successful, it would be great to, to move forward with the project here. At, this might come up sometimes. And so, you know, when we get into real projects that are getting, getting announced, we're often setting up a technical advisory committee with, with, through staff to develop the plan. We're, we're making regular updates to council on the project. There would be some form of engagement that's appropriate with First Nations and other, other stakeholders in the community that may need to be engaged on the plan and the process and the site design. In some cases, we've developed, I guess, formal groups with terms of references. In some cases, with neighborhoods in an area so that they can be up to date on what's, what's happening. We've done that with a project that we have in the Victoria region around View Royal. And, and just to bring it all back together, you know, the, the reason we're, we're developing this plan is to support the community's plans for transit and climate action. This moving a project forward is going to help us transition to, to battery electric bus. We need a facility that has enough power and equipment to support the buses. It will secure space for local transit and regional transit plans over the next 25 years. And it will, you know, if we're, we're moving forward now with the ISOP program available, it would, it really reduces the, the local government's contribution of approximately $8 million if we're looking at the costs that we're seeing today. And so I think in the staff report, there's a recommendation from staff or council to, to consider moving this forward. And so maybe I will leave it there so we can, if there's any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. I see a question from Counsel Rayce.
Thank you. With respect to the, to the ISOP grant, he implied in a year, but probably weren't going to spend it for, say, three or four years. Does the capacity open that long or is there a timing issue that can come up with that?
Yes, with, with a facility project, it takes a number of years to implement. So the sooner we get the application, the better. And we don't have to start spending the, the funds, right? Right? Like, you know, the construction part of it right of way. We're reserving Squamish's share. And we have until the program ends, I believe it's up till 2028 or so to, to spend the funding. And that being said, with this type of program, there's no official word yet, but there's an assumption that it's likely that the program would be extended longer, but that's not guaranteed.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Anyone else? Mayor Elliott?
Thanks. Um, it's not clear to me from the report how we consider regional transit in this. So that 25 bus expansion, that includes buses for regional transit or it doesn't over the next 15 years? And do regional transit systems and local transit systems share the same maintenance facilities elsewhere in the province?
So one example I could speak to, in the Cowichin Valley, they have a, a local transit system, a handy dirt transit system. And they have a service called the Cowichin Valley Commuter. And those buses are all parked at the same facility in, in the Cowichin, Cowichin Valley. And in this plan, when we're looking at forecasting the service requirements and the fleet requirements, we're taking into account the information that was provided in an earlier planning report on the need for, for eight, eight buses to support that service. And then some, some forecasts for future growth of a, a couple of, of more buses at some point in the future.
Sorry, James, those eight buses were for the regional system?
Correct.
Yep, okay.
Okay, I'll go to Counsel Stoner.
Thank you, through the chair. Thank you for the presentation. I guess I'm just curious, our current transit maintenance facility in Squamish is not funded by or supported by the district at all. I think in the staff report, it says that it's provided by Squamish PW Transit as part of their contract with BC Transit. And so I'm curious, while I appreciate that we have ambitions as a community to grow our transit facilities, why we're being expected to come to the table with this amount of money?
So my understanding is, oh, Rob, if you want to take the question, you're welcome to.
Yeah, no, that, yeah, maybe I can lend their counsel, Counsel Stoner. Thank you very much for your question. The, so PWT or Diversified, who owns the current facility, would charge BC Transit a fee through our operating contract with that provider. So the district of Squamish, just, just so we're clear, the district of Squamish and BC Transit would be paying currently for a portion or thereof of the lease fees of the current facility. So it's not, there are lease fees and costs that are currently involved with the current facility.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll go to Counsel Anderson.
Thank you. In, in some respects, following a line of question similar to Mayor Elliott, that is on collaborative, collaboration in facilities. Pointed to Mr. Wadsworth, the Production Way facility in Burnaby and the Campbell River facility. You've drawn attention to the Cowichin Valley facility. These are communities with, without the same industrial land pressures that we do here in Squamish. And my, my, what I'm curious about is whether you have seen or whether you have explored scenarios for co-location with other enterprises requiring electric charging infrastructure and what may come along with the operating battery electric fleets, such as heavy equipment or in fact cars, service facilities, that kind of thing, that may be utilizing the same kind of infrastructure. Are there location scenarios or examples that you've come across?
So good question. Finding, finding property for a facility, we found in all communities, they have similar challenges around industrial, land availability, whether it's industrial land. Finding a location where, you know, is efficient for, for transit. I know we have, we have one location in the Victoria region where we, we have the bus facility way out on the periphery of town in the west shore. And they, in, in the Victoria region, they have significant costs for bus deadheading. It actually costs them about a million dollars a year just to run buses out of service to where they're needed to get into service. And so, you know, there's, there's a lot of factors that go into selecting a, a site that, you know, keeps the costs low for local governments, but also understanding there's lots of other land needs as well. And, you know, as we move forward, these facilities that were, we've been building, we have not partnered with other agencies. I think we've looked at how we could partner with school districts in the past, but we haven't found a partnership that is viable to date. I know we looked at it when we were looking in the Cowichin Valley to see if we could partner with the school. And it, and it wasn't, it wasn't an option that worked for us. Sometimes you get into collective agreement issues with the different, the different entities that don't make it possible. I can think of one location right now in BC where we do lease some space at a, a school district. But it's, it's not, it's not a law, we just lease it. And so we're, we're in the position where if they chose not to renew the lease, then we're, we're out of luck and scrambling to, to find a location. And so the, I think the best option is to own property that we can hold for transit's use over the long term and, and not have to worry about finding a new location. And also, when we're look at, we're, we're looking at getting the best value. I can't, I can't make this quantitative, but qualitatively, you know, when we're, we're looking at different operating companies bidding on a service in the future, you know, if they, if none of them have a competitive advantage because they own the facility, we may get, may be able to extract better value from the contract.
Thank you, Mr. Wadsworth.
Okay, I'll go to Counsel French.
Thanks, Chair. So I'm curious about the, the numbers relating to regional transit, eight buses. And it's leaving me with the feeling like Squamish is carrying all of the future burden around regional transit. What role, if any, is there for Whistler and Pemberton to, to play in that scenario?
So that's a good question. Rob, did you want to talk about the, the governance and where that could go in the future?
Yeah, for sure. Counsel French, thank you very much for the question. Good point. What would, what I would see would typically happen in a situation like this is if regional transit was furthered and came to life, you would obviously have a local government structure. And I believe right now it's kind of a seed of sky, potentially a transit commission that would then enter into an AOA agreement with, with BC Transit for provision of that regional service. As part of the cost of that service, we would probably analyze the space, the percentage of space, the ratio of space that that service would take up within the Squamish facility. And I would see that those local government partners would need to decide on how they would fund that kind of portion of this overall facility towards Squamish. Of course, Squamish would have an interest in that, so there'd be a piece that they would, they would pay. But I would see that regional transit. So there'd be a piece that they would, they would pay. But I would see that regional transit governments, governance structure determining how they would offset some of those costs. Because of course, if they're going to utilize the facility, that structure, that governance structure would would need to applicably pay for their portion of that facility. And that would probably be through, again, through kind of a lease fee through their their annual operating agreement with with BC Transit.
Okay, thanks. And Chair, a follow up. Does Whistler have capacity at their existing facility to take some of the the regional bus load?
Through the chair, Counsel French, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me. I know the the Whistler facility may have some capacity, but I don't believe they have capacity for all eight buses. But I can definitely follow up and get that information back to back to council.
Yep.
Thank you.
My understanding is that's, yeah, that's the case. And that really part of it also is service design. Where would we want the buses to to start in service as well? And the assumption is we would be wanting several of the buses to start in in Squamish because that would be effective for providing the service. I think an example of we're, we're struggling in the Fraser Valley with room for for buses there. And we may have to move the buses from Chilliwack to Abbotsford, and their deadhead costs would go up significantly for that. And they have a similar amount of buses, and that could be a couple hundred thousand dollars a year in deadhead. And so that's why, you know, it's really important where we think about where some of the buses are located. It keeps the costs down longer term.
Okay, thank you, Council. We have a motion, proposed motion regarding the scope of the what we just saw. Counselor Stone, you have a question?
Yeah. I had one more question. And this might be to our finance staff. Appreciate the opportunity that there might be a different way to finance this through lease fee. I'm just curious if that has the same impact on our budgets in terms of amount of debt that we can take on and or whether that is seen as different than us kind of putting the cash forward.
This is a question. To also, people to answer that. Yeah.
Good afternoon, Council through the chair. It's it really takes, it it depends on what form it takes. So if it's an operating lease, it does not. However, if it goes into a capital lease, it does have implications on the debt. It'll, it'll take what format it'll, it'll depend on what format we take with the project.
Okay, you, Councilor Race, are you moving or you had a question? Councilor Race is moving.
No question. So just hypothetically, if we wanted to say provide for a facility for 75 buses, is it just a straight linear progression? In other words, instead of five, it's seven and a half acres. And instead of 10 million, it comes becomes 15 million? Or are there a very high level? Is that roughly what we're looking at?
Um, I I would say there's somewhat a relationship. It really depends on the piece of property that we're dealing with, the shape of it. I I know that for 150 buses, we've looked at a few facilities and we're looking between 13 and 15 acres for a facility of that size. So I I think it's a correct to assume that I know we're looking at potentially a 75 bus facility in Chilliwack, and we're looking at about seven and a bit acres there to make make that work seven to eight. So yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I'll move it while I'm talking.
Okay, so we have a member, someone on the second. Mayor Elliott, seconds and discussion. If you have a call question, anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Um, why don't we take? I don't want to go three hours straight. So why don't we take until 1:43? I'll come back. Hello, and welcome back, everyone. We are still in the hall, and I'm going to turn it to Mr. Bailey for a presentation on our, on stage three of our zoning bylaw updates.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Brian Daly, Development and Subdivision Coordinator with Community Planning. And I'm here today to present the stage three, stage three technical amendments of the 2020 zoning bylaw update. The 2020 zoning bylaw update consists of three stages. Stage one, high priority alignment with the official community plan was completed in the fall of 2020. Stage two, official community plan alignment was completed in the spring of 2021. And stage three, the general amendments, which is the stage we are currently on. Stage three of the zoning bylaw is intended, update is intended to address a broader range of issues under the categories of increased flexibility, improved functionality, and address gaps. Staff have been identifying and tracking issues in the current zoning bylaw over a number of years. This has informed the general amendments in stage three. A separate set of bylaws related to OCP alignment and marine zoning are currently also underway as a separate component of stage three. Staff have drafted District of Squamish zoning bylaw number 2824 2021, which will repeal and replace the current District of Squamish zoning bylaw number 2221. The stage three amendments include roughly 100 technical amendments, and the amendments can be generally categorized into the following topics. Improving clarity. Definitions have been added or modified to make parts of the zoning bylaw more clear. Conflicting, obsolete, or confusing sections of the bylaw have been deleted or modified to improve clarity. For example, patios, decks, balconies, and porches were were not defined, but were allowed to project into required setbacks. This could lead to confusion for staff and designers about the types of structures that are eligible to project into setbacks. Increasing flexibility. A number of general regulations have been amended to increase flexibility in the bylaw. Staff have identified a number of of sections that often lead to variance requests. An example includes exempting wild safe waste enclosures from setback requirements if a lot does not abut a lane. Staff want to incentivize developments providing a central wild safe waste enclosure as opposed to individual totes. However, these can often lead to variance requests as accessory buildings cannot be located in a front yard. Addressing gaps. Gaps in the zoning bylaw that were identified and have been addressed have have been identified and addressed in this amendment, excuse me. Examples include prohibiting commercial water bottling as a use in all zones or requiring shared indoor amenity space in apartment developments to be provided in a single location. Another gap in the current zoning bylaw is the issue of winking out uses, which is essentially listing specific uses that would normally fall under a more broad use in the same zone, which would imply that they are separate uses from one another. Example to illustrate this issue is cabinet making, carpentry, woodworking, and mill working use is not defined in the zoning bylaw and would typically fall under the broader light industrial use as light industrial allows for the processing, fabricating, assembling, or repairing of goods or materials. However, there are zones that have cabinet making and light industrial as permitted uses in the same zone, such as I-10. Since both uses are called out as permitted uses in the same zone, it implies that cabinet making would not be permitted in other zones that allow light industrial, but do not also allow cabinet making, such as the Business Park Industrial Zone. This can lead to uncertainty for business or property owners. Removing cabinet making and leaving light industrial as a use in zones where both are permitted will clarify that cabinet making is considered a light industrial use and is permitted in any zone that allows light industrial. Staff propose to conduct engagement at an involved level on the IAPG spectrum of public participation. A detailed story map will be established online with a review of the proposed general amendments. The story page will also be accompanied by two online open houses to solicit solicit public and stakeholder feedback. Staff are seeking feedback on the scope of the amendments and the engagement strategy from council. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Just getting screen cards here, most hands. Okay, I see Councilor Anderson.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey, my first question may be somewhat amusing, but I'll pose it. And if you have any response, I'll appreciate that. We have in the package attention to bike wash areas and facilities and bicycle parking. The last council dealt with a an initiative to address storage units in the business park. Based on the concern of around the space that was being utilized for this function rather than employment, just to put it in broad terms. It's my observation and the observation of many people who are looking for apartments or condos is that's the space is really tight in many new developments downtown and other, for example, waterfront landing. The types of units on waterfront landing, not necessarily all of them. So my 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 general musing is that should we not also be looking at giving attention to storage as a requirement alongside these other types of amenities like bicycle parking and bike wash areas? With the same consideration that council gave a few years ago, the last council, that storage is the storage issue for many of the new developments is creating issues elsewhere for our employment lands. So the general question, perhaps it may be an idea to examine storage as a use in the zoning bylaw to address this. And as I said, maybe that's just amusing, but it strikes me that it's a common experience and an issue that last council has dealt with.
So through the chair, that's certainly something we can look at. And just to clarify, you're you're referencing to having a storage facility for storage of goods, such as the one that is adjacent to the Solterra Business Park development, like an actual storage development? Or are you referencing requiring dedicated storage space for goods within developments?
The latter. And this may be varied circumstances, larger developments such as the waterfront landing area or or larger subdivision like that, but also the buildings downtown. They, these are creating some dilemmas for some of the tenants.
Certainly, that is a good point and something that we can look at. The, just for clarification, the revised bike parking standards, we're trying, we're in an attempt to kind of make them more functional and to require bike, you know, areas in the building that residents can wash their bike, similar to the trip end facilities that we require in industrial and commercial developments for people using active transportation to commute.
Yes, Mr. Bailey, and I think one of the impacts of addressing the bike situation as you are will alleviate some of the storage issues faced by some of these tenants. My second question, Chair, is concerning the cabinet making and mill work. Having operated a mill workshop in Vancouver years ago in a light industrial zone, my experience is I created a lot of noise. Or me and my partners did. And so I'm a little bit surprised that this has been identified as an issue. And perhaps is your experience on the street, if you like, and and in working with projects. But perhaps this is something that the people who are operating cabinet making shops and mill workshops will have opportunity to come forward to you with perspectives and and input. But can you share anything about the why we are addressing this? Because it does seem to me that quite often these types of shops do are good fit with light industrial.
So through the chair, just to clarify, this is, it's not about a that we don't want to include cabinet making and in as light industrial. It's a, this is very bureaucratic, but there is a term called winking out uses, which I tried to address in my slide, but perhaps I didn't do the best job of that. Essentially, if you have a a zone that allows for light industrial and also cabinet making, then that that means that they're considered two separate uses. So everywhere else in the zoning bylaw that allows light industrial but doesn't also call out cabinet making, essentially, you technically shouldn't allow cabinet making in that zone under the light industrial use. When you have the specific use, it's winking it out. So you're taking, you're getting too specific in the zone. And then you're, you're essentially taking that use out of the light industrial broader term because you've called it out in the same zone. You're saying, it's saying that they are two separate uses. What we're trying to do here is remove cabinet making and just let it live under the light industrial broader use.
Thank you for that clarification of the term, Mr. Bailey. One final point, and it's just a typo, really. Under the I-11 business supply, building supply outlet conditions of use, there's a reference to Cedar Sky Business Park, where I think you probably mean Squamish Business Park, the whole package, rather than just the Cedar Sky Enterprise in the northern part of the Business Park. Thank you.
Okay, I'll go to Mayor Elliott.
Mr. Bailey, thanks for defining Winkle. I was trying to figure out last night whether that was a typo or, yeah, very, very glad that you took some time to explain that. I know in the changes we're contemplating tonight for the oceanfront around mass timber and needing variations on height and and then for passive house because the walls are thicker. Have have we made it as easy as possible in our zoning bylaw for builders to build with mass timber or to a passive house standard, some other standard that requires thicker walls that don't impinge on their growth floor area?
So through the chair, there are, we did increase the allowable overhangs into the projections into required setback. And I believe the wall thickness is slightly thicker than what it used to be, but it certainly is something that that can be looked at before it's brought back for readings. I know that Vancouver has pretty, pretty good exemptions to try and incentivize this stuff. So there's other jurisdictions that could certainly be reviewed and and these things could be addressed before it's brought back for readings or before it goes for engagement with the public.
That would be great, something to to look at because we want to incentivize more of those types of really efficient buildings. And we don't want to put up barriers for people applying for variances. Just because they've chosen to go that route. Um, I'm also curious about all of reducing all the setbacks in the RM zones and what's driving that?
So through the chair, the in discussions with my colleagues, it was noted in the tracker that the rear and interior side setbacks for the multifamily developments were often leading into variance requests, or it was resulting in much smaller balconies being provided. So this was trying to incentivize allowing some more flexibility to provide more living space or or outdoor, private outdoor space in the developments. A 25 foot setback is quite large for on multifamily buildings, especially given that a number of areas, these, that form of housing is consistent throughout the neighborhood. So it was seen as kind of a punitive setback and was making it sort of more challenging to achieve different design features throughout the development. So that was why it was noted in the tracker, I believe.
Okay, and then we talk about basement steps and balconies projecting the side setbacks. And then also, waterproof enclosures can be in the setbacks. But are we establishing a minimum from the lot line that they have to be? Because the whole point of setbacks was to protect that sort of respect between neighbors. And so I'm just wondering how all these sort of changes to setbacks are allowing patios and balconies and wild safe enclosures to encroach.
Through the chair, the steps does have a maximum allowable projection. I believe it's 2.03 meters into the setback. The wild safe waste enclosures did not include a maximum because we wanted to maintain that flexibility and staff can also work with the applicants through the typically this, these are going to be reviewed at a development permit stage. So you have that that time to do the back and forth. Obviously, you'll, you know, if it's not in an ideal location, you can work with the applicant to address that and then that alleviates the requirement for them to go the variance route for that.
Okay, I'll go to Councilor Stone.
Thank you through the chair, just to follow up on the question around the reduced setbacks in the RM zones. Appreciate the rationale there, but if we're also then allowing things like decks and patios and shared outdoor space to be in those setbacks, then is that like kind of a double bonus in some ways?
Through the chair, I, so the other thing that we did was include definitions, specific definitions of decks and patios and things like that. And And balconies are, are only allowed to permit or to project a certain amount. I suppose it would be considered a double bonus, but the main projection that was allowed is at, is a patio, which is defined as at grade, so not necessarily a deck. There is a small provision for a deck to increase, but it is not very much. I don't have the number off the top of my head. But the intention was to kind of get quite specific about these projections into setbacks and defining what each different item that was allowed to project in there was. And my recollection is that the major one is for decks that are, or patios which are at grade or decks that are providing a landing down from a door or entryway from a building into the required setbacks.
Yeah, I had another question. Is that okay? Um, my other question was around the changes to the bicycle space parking and appreciate that we are creating some clarity around end of trip facilities. But as I read the amendments in 41.9, I think we may have lost the descriptions around the Class B bicycle spaces. So it's just a note to staff that I didn't, I saw them crossed out in red, but I didn't see them reiterated anywhere else further down. So I just want to make sure that we don't lose the descriptions around the Class B bicycle spaces and what those should be providing. And I'm also curious if we've ever considered stronger requirements around covered Class B bicycle spaces to try and so like not that full end of trip facility, but at least whether you have a covered space to put your bicycle.
That is certainly something that we can explore before these are brought forth for readings, and it is a good point.
So I'll, I'll ask a couple of questions. I don't know if I want to go back to the cabinetry winking a little bit if I can. As I understand the changes, you couldn't do it as a sole proprietor anymore at home or something like that. And I'm just wondering about the person as a sole proprietor, maybe they're doing some really custom stuff. It takes a long time, but it is for sale. Or, you know, herb houses on the weekend with your kids, it's sort of a project you can sell them. Is that kind of thing permissible in, in a lot of our zones now? Or is it just light industrial where you can do that sort of thing?
Through the chair, the, the intent is that these, that this is a use that is supposed to be in a light industrial zone. Obviously, cabinet making and mill work is a, could potentially cause a nuisance to neighbors in a residential neighborhood. I think that people obviously may do that as a hobby or, you know, at their home shop. And while technically not a permitted use in a residential zone, if the neighbors aren't complaining about it, then we likely wouldn't be enforcing against that. But I think that's sort of the, or how that's been working and will continue to move forward if you're doing that at home. The intention again is in residential neighborhoods to try and minimize conflicting uses. So obviously, if someone's running a full-time mill workshop in a, on a residentially zoned property with residentially zoned neighbors, then that could pose an issue. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I'll ask the follow-up and then I'll go to Mr. Donbalskis. So I was also thinking too, I know the men shed is, is possibly moving with the new senior center and wondering about compatibility. I suppose they're maybe not a for-profit, but you know, I wasn't sure how if that's going to fit for proposing. Mr. Donbalskis, can you comment on?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to the discussion that some mill working is possible under the home occupation. Definition, the home occupation is limited mainly by the size and a requirement that it doesn't have negative impacts such as noise on, on adjacent properties. So some small scale mill working would still be possible. We're not changing the home occupation definition or requirements in this case.
Okay, thank you. My next question, as I read the proposed changes, we are going to require electric fueling as for alternative fueling as well as traditional gas fossil fueling. And I'm wondering, you know, I spoke a little bit about similar thing in the marine strategy, but to my mind, this is very different where electric cars are here now, they're sort of growing exponentially. So if someone has a viable commercial operation, they think they could make it with just electric fueling, why would we require them to provide gas fuel, which seems that's when we ordered the bylaws?
Through the chair, that is not the intention in that definition. It was intended to require that gasoline feeling, if a gasoline feeling station is opening, that it also provide a electric vehicle charging or electric vehicles charging. The definition was intended, or I attempted to mimic the definition that was recently brought forward through the marine zoning. Cause I was recall that that garnered some discussion. So that's not the intention behind that definition. It's just to reflect that if you are intending to open a strictly a gasoline servicing station or a new one, that you also provide electric vehicle charging and not to penalize someone that wanted to open only an electric vehicle charging station.
Okay, maybe that's something for myself or staff to check along. Cause I read, as I read, there didn't seem to be to open just a charging station if that was to wish. But maybe I misread that. I'll go to Cassie, I heard of that.
Thank you. I had a, a look through the CD zones of interest to me. And I had a look through the, the changes of the CD zones. And I'm thinking about the, you know, the goals of, the higher level goals of flexibility and clarity. And I wonder as, as the rest of the bylaws or the zones sort of start changing, are we looking at opportunities to roll some of these CD zones into our newer, more, more flexible and clearer? So like under this new, new regime, this sort of the output of this work, are we going to be able to take care of some of those, bring the CD zones into the normal zoning structure?
Through the chair, that was not identified as part of this scope of the technical amendments. I would maybe defer to Jonas or to my director to elaborate on this question or whether we'd be looking at that in the future. I guess there's, there's potentially some challenges sometimes as these were all property specific amendments, but I'll defer to my director.
Yeah, thank you. I'm specifically thinking of the, the opportunities where they exist in the older CD zones that have been established for a while. And sometimes these CD zones are the precursors to other zoning changes that we end up making, particularly the orphaned ones. So when the, where a CD zone has been applied to a property, but now it hasn't happened anyways.
Yeah, Mr. Donbalskis.
We could certainly take a look at those empty CD zones. In terms of the rest of them, you know, we have probably like a hundred of CD zones. All the definition and the general requirements, changes that we're making will apply to all the CD zones or most of them. Because those, those sections apply to all, all zones unless it's specifically called out in a zone that the certain section doesn't apply. So the, the changes will apply to CD zones. However, trying to review all of the CD zones and make changes is very, would be very labor intensive. And also a lot of times there's a land development agreement that's been registered and signed for the property that kind of locks in certain, certain zoning aspects. So one thing that we could do is we could look at those empty CD zones to see if there's anything that we could do to modernize them.
Okay, thank you.
Council, any other questions?
I had one more question about the off-street loading requirements and the reductions that are proposed there. If staff can just kind of speak to the rationale for that. And I'm just particularly curious, the, the new proposal says that anything less than 500 square meters or just over 5,000 square feet actually doesn't require a loading zone anymore, which puts off some red flags in my head, but I would love to hear rationale on that.
So through the chair, the incentive of revisiting the loading space requirements is that they're quite high. And previously they could not be shared between uses. So that would result in either variances or a lot of space being dedicated to loading, loading space. The, the incentive for the, the smaller lots was to assist with development on small, small lot development, typically downtown. And I believe that if in, or in downtown south, it allows for smaller properties to not provide one onsite, as long as they provide an off-street loading space within 45 meters of, of a property. And for buildings that are less than 500 meters squared of gross floor area, it also reduced that amount to zero. So the intention is just to help facilitate these kind of smaller, smaller developments to make these projects more viable, because that's one thing that we've heard quite frequently from local designers working on these smaller lot projects is that some of the parking and loading space requirements can make it very challenging to develop these sites.
Okay, any other questions, council? I guess I have one for, for staff. Once this wraps up, that we plan through phases, what happens next in terms of zoning bylaws? Do we sort of, are we staying booked for a while? Or do we sort of, is this a constant iteration? And I guess in the back of my mind is, you know, wondering when we get to some of the low carbon incentives for industrial commercial buildings, which I understand are part of this, but just sort of moving towards the future.
So through, through the chair, this is, obviously this wouldn't be the end of stage three. It's kind of, as you described, it's kind of an ongoing thing. There's certainly things in the zoning bylaw tracker that weren't addressed in, in these amendments. Specifically any ones that are kind of neighborhood related or property specific, such as rezoning the downtown south neighborhood. Because it's very, staff thought it was, it would be unfair and very challenging to try and do engagement on all of these very technical amendments. And then on top of that, specific property amendments. So although there will be further stages coming forward after this, this, this general amendments or technical amendment stage was to try and address as many of the very technical amendments as possible in one, one bylaw and move that through and do strategic engagement on that and recognizing that a lot of these are very technical in nature and not necessarily changing zoning on specific properties. So yes, there will still be subsequent zoning bylaw amendments. And I'm not sure if my director has anything to add to that answer or not.
I would only add that the zoning bylaw is really now a living document. So we're always in some phase of a series of amendments. And we are planning already for what is going to be in phase four. And I guess at some point we're going to have to stop calling them phases because we're, I'm sure that we'll be doing this continuously, adjusting.
Okay, thank you. Let's see any more hands from council. Maybe, Mr. Daily, can I ask you to summarize the key feedback you heard?
Okay, so what I heard was to examine, you know, look at storage, requiring storage space within developments. I heard a few kind of minor technical notations that should be looked at from, you know, typos and whatnot. If you look at passive house standards and ways to incentivize low carbon and green building types. And then to revisit the definition of gasoline feeling station, maybe double, take another look at the loading space criteria and to look at any old orphaned CD zones and see if they can be brought into alignment with existing zones in the zoning bylaw.
Okay, thank you. Just for clarity, I mean, I would love to see incentives for zero emissions, commercial industrial buildings, but I don't think that's what they're talking about in this space. So it wasn't proposing that we add that unless staff really want to. But I'm not sure that there's general council support for that, that one at this point. But on all the other stuff, people, does that sound like what we're talking about? Or are people eager to, to go, is that true right now?
Just to clarify, I was speaking specifically to allowance for gross floor area exemptions for passive house buildings or trade exemptions for mass timber buildings.
Okay, my mistake. Thank you for the clarification. So folks, does that sound like everyone will want to hear? See some nodding? Is there anything missing there? Mr. Donbalskis?
Um, the only thing that I also have was making sure that we don't lose the descriptions of Class B bicycle spaces and consider covered Class B parking.
Okay, so we have motion. To receive the report and provide the feedback. We've heard a summary of what that feedback is. And that we direct staff to prepare some bylaws based on, on the feedback from this meeting. Does someone want to move that? Councilor Stronger? Second back answer French, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those, are, is anyone posed? No, motion carries. All right, so we are ahead, which is fantastic. So thank you, staff, for that presentation. Last official declared. We are now ready to discuss the EDCM convention. And I believe in particular, this is ministers that we might want to have a, the discussion with. Mayor Elliott, did you want to provide any additional context to this? Okay. So, open to hearing, open to hearing any thoughts about Mayor Elliott?
Epperton has asked if we'd like to do a joint meeting about childcare facilities. Since we both lost out on funding and have sent a prior letter on, on to define exceptional circumstances. So Mayor Richmond and I would like to meet with Minister Chen about that. I missed the discussion at SLRD, but I understand that the regional district is going to approach the minister for transportation about regional transit. But I think that we should meet with Minister Fleming about all of our highway intersection upgrades because we presented these to Minister Trevenna several times. We're still waiting on word about Cleveland Avenue upgrades, but we also pointed out some safety issues with, and capacity issues at many of our intersections. So it would be good to bring Minister Fleming up to speed on those.
Any other, Councilor Anderson?
Thank you. Of course, the ministry, Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure is a steady for us, a date we have every year. And I've been following past council discussions. I have been looking at some programs that Squamish should give some consideration to. And we overlooked, and relating to major transportation funding, federal, provincial. The province undertakes periodically for different parts of the province, a corridor management plan. There's been no like study for the Cedar Sky Corridor since the, I think it's 1990s, 2001. I'm sorry, but I think it's nineteen nineties, two thousand and one, I'm sorry, about two thousand and one. And such a management plan would perhaps improve our prospects for applying for. Monies relating to some of the major infrastructure we're looking for for relating to Squamish terminals. Um, it kind of truck route planning, uh marine facility planning. And so what I'm suggesting broadly is that we do some homework to identify or place ourselves in the language of the. Gateway program of the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure. And ask why Squamish is not on the map and hasn't been for a long time. Um, and there's many reasons why we are not and many reasons why we should be. Uh, this might be a conversation that we would entertain, uh, bringing in other local partners to share information. But I'm suggesting that a a conversation with the Minister of Transportation regarding. Major transportation planning and why Squamish continues to be left off the map, this corridor. We're not part of the lower mainland, but but they don't seem to actually identify that issue either. Um, and we're not part of the other other corridors that are being looked at.
Counsel, any thoughts on that? So, uh, do we have a sense of of how many minister meetings it's reasonable to ask for?
I didn't hear the question.
Do you have a sense of how many minister meetings it's reasonable to ask for, like, we ask, we asking for ten, hoping to get three, or should we be pulling for the the two we really want?
Um, we're not going to get everything we asked for, and the other approach is to use some. Staff can also request staff to staff meetings, which tend to um. Provided in higher numbers versus minister to council, um. But the other one that I think that we should talk about. And I don't know if the SOD is covering this, I'm sorry that I missed the last meeting, but. You know, we have this ongoing issue with visitor management and the lack of campsites and parks and rec sites and. Campground spaces and there's new funding in the BC Parks uh budget. Um, which should be focused on high use areas like ours, so I wonder if there's um an opportunity to meet with uh. Linrow and BC Parks about that issue specifically.
Yeah, although the counsel Stone?
Yeah, I was gonna suggest something similar, and the SLRD, I think, will be requesting a minister minister meeting with Minister Conroy on rec sites in particular. But I do think it's worth us also putting a request in, and we'll have some interesting data and insights, I think, from our. Seasonal visitor management plan and experience this year, and we've had ongoing conversations with Flynnrow about. A low cost, simple campsite somewhere in and around the district. Um, that I think would be worth advancing uh in our own meeting. Uh, knowing that there's also a regional discussion more broadly around ongoing support for rec sites, but. I think we have enough specifics to our community that it's worth uh requesting that meeting for the District of Squamish as well.
Um, the other one that I, and I'm not sure if it's uh useful or not, but. Your Minister Osborne seems to be willing to listen, what came up for me uh at the last. SLRD meeting is, I think a lot of us have assuming have been assuming that um. Parental leave and maternal leave are are just province-wide now, and that that's all we do, and I've come to understand that's not the case. Uh, that the province still hasn't put forward province-wide legislation. Um, and I gather when UBCM approached the province, it's a couple of years ago now, and. I don't know that the province is working on that, so is this something that we want to sort of remind them that this is still something we're interested in? Counselor Stone?
Um, I think at the SLRD meeting, we did decide that we'd bring forward a motion for consideration at UBCM on this matter. Um, so I don't know if it requires a minister meeting at this time, but I think going through the process of bringing it up through UBCM. Uh, it hasn't been touched by UBCM, I don't think, since twenty sixteen. Um, so I think maybe getting the conversation started that way and seeing what level of support we have with our member municipalities. Might be a better approach at this time than requesting a minister meeting on the topic. Would be my two cents.
Okay. So I think then. I'm hearing Flynnrow about visitor management, um. Uh, counsel Anderson, sorry, that was sort of transportation being part of the metro van uh sort of order.
Emphasis on gateway, why are we not considered part of the Pacific Gateway? And why do we not have a uh a corridor management plan as other corridors in the province do? And this multimodal corridor management plan?
Okay. So that, and I unfortunately I've written wrote down visitor management twice and not the uh, the other fingers together. Mayor Elliott?
Oh, I would just like to say if if um. SLRD is pursuing the rec sites and we can include our needs for area D and around Squamish, then. I'd rather focus on DC Parks where there's eighty-three million dollars of new funding and making the case for an investment in uh. BC Parks expansion and then use the SLRD time to. Some of the hot points for Squamish there, because I don't think we'll both get meetings on the same topic. So I'd rather focus on DC Parks for our advocacy and then make sure one of us is in the SLRD meeting. For Flynnrow on um. Rec sites.
Thanks for that, and and I realized it was childcare together.
Yes, childcare.
Uh, counsel Stone?
Uh, just to triangulate with the SLRD request there on childcare, I think. Uh, there was also discussion at the SLRD table if they were going to put that request in, or if Primerton and Squamish were just going to do it. Together, I don't remember what the final decision was, I think there was still some confusion, so just in. Note that we should go back to Jen as chair and figure out who's requesting that meeting.
So I I think um. The the childcare piece and the BC parks piece are fairly clear to me at least. Counselor Anderson. I'm not, uh, I'm wondering if you can expand a bit on. Uh, is is the ask that we see more imports and exports out of Squamish or that we're part of just discussions and understanding, or what is the ask?
Oh, fine, here, I can go into just a little bit more detail, just tell me when to cut me off, but um. I have been looking at the most recent transportation trade network analysis study produced by the province. And they name Whistler on their map, but not Squamish, but they talk about, um, well. Uh, the ninety-nine north corridor is entirely missing from the scope of this report. It was also missing for the scope of a previous report from the lower mainland, which this report refers to. So we are, we've fallen between the cracks. And when we look at ninety-nine north, that is multimodal transportation of tourists, rail, bus, the whole picture. This is what typically will go into a provincial ministry corridor management plan, which we have not seen for our corridor. We have Squamish terminals and Squamish nation, which are definitely stakeholders in that they they uh lease or own our portlands. So they're necessary partners in this conversation, neither of them are identified in the provincial government reports, not for the lower mainland. Uh, gateway and not for the rest of the province and the Prince Rupert Gateway or the interior corridors that are examined. So in a nutshell, Squamish has fallen through the cracks, there's big money on the table. Uh, for other communities like Nanaimo, these are monies for uh tourist facilities, for bike paths. For uh projects that we that come up in our discussions relative to SERP, relative to downtown truck routes. That belong in other communities in a gateway funding envelope discussion. And Transport Canada has a fund for such projects. But unless we are named in the plans put together by the by the province, we're going to continue to miss out. So we need to self-identify ourselves and help the minister to identify Squamish and our role in the provincial transportation picture, tourism and export.
Picture, Mayor Elliott?
Uh, in a recent conversation with um Economic Development Staff, uh. The group in MOTI is now called the Integrated Transportation Branch. Uh, it used to be formerly Pacific Gateway, so um. We can certainly look at that, that would um also influence influence some our. Uh, Green Innovation Hub proposal as well, uh, because. It's that transportation planning that that needs to be considered within that, so it might be an opportunity to. Uh, kill two birds with one stone. That may be, um. So may have to prioritize um in our list of whether the MOTI. Um, discussion would rather be about that or the highway and maybe staff the staff could take the highway and. Um, council could focus on the. The area that Counselor Anderson has raised, along with our Green Innovation Hub.
You, uh, counsel Anderson, does your hand again?
Uh, thank you, Chair, no, I'm just indicating my support for Mayor Elliott's comments.
Okay, so I think I'm hearing four items then, uh, childcare. Uh, with Pemberton pending a discussion with SLRD, uh, BC Parks, uh, regarding visitor management. And then uh with various MOTI folks, maybe at a staff level or on highway issues. And at a political level, um, around some of the topics uh that counsel Anderson and Mayor Elliott discussed. Mayor Elliott?
I also wonder, you know, Bowen Ma is the Minister of State for Infrastructure, and I wonder if there's an opportunity here to look at some of the. Major projects we have pending, whether it's related to our community climate action plan or some of our master plans or asset management and um. Maybe just staff could have a discussion about whether there might be an opportunity there to put forward some of our. Our needs on the infrastructure front that maybe aren't addressed by current funding programs or uh that sort of thing, so be. You know, something that I throw out there to staff to consider and and we can always uh add that to the list, but um. You know, she's familiar with Squamish, um, and uh. Uh, would be an interesting person to talk to if if we do have. Sort of we see gaps in in the funding mechanisms for infrastructure projects right now.
Okay, seeing some nods to that. Uh, any other thoughts, counsel? Okay, so is this something that we want to sleep on and have a final session at the next, you know, or do you want to get ratified this at our next uh regular business meeting?
Uh, requests have to go in by the end of the month, Chair, so we'd have to approve them at a special business meeting.
Okay. Uh, so do we want a a resolution on this? Yeah, okay, so, um. I guess. Okay, that would be awesome. I'm just getting a copy of the post. Post order. So, um, and do we want to direct staff to prepare the work at this point? Is that part of this resolution? Or we're just confirming what we're interested in pursuing? Because we're already stumbled with a briefing, are we ready to ask for those briefings at this point? Chair?
At this point, we, that's all.
To leave that question.
At this point, only the request will be impacted, and we're concerned for our very right.
Okay, so it's just to which meetings to request, so. So we will, um, the motions that we. Uh, ask that staff request minister meetings, um, with Minister Chen about childcare facilities with Pemberton. Uh, unless the SLRD is going to do this. That we speak to Minister Fleming regarding highway ninety-nine intersection upgrades. Uh, that we meet with MOTI regarding major transportation funding. As part of um the Integrated Trans Transportation Branch. Um, and that staff meet with MOTI regarding highway upgrades. Uh, let me ask for a visitor management meeting with BC Parks. Uh, and that we meet with Bowen Ma, um. But asset management and some major projects we have. And actually, maybe I'll just uh see here, the MOTI was about the Integrated Transportation Branch and. Possibly the Green Innovation Hub. Yes, together. So does that capture, counsel? If so, does someone want to move that? Counsel Anderson moves, second here. Counselor Stone, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question. Anyone opposed? Seeing no opposition, that carries. And now I think I need a motion to close. Uh, counsel Herbert, second back counsel Stone, anyone opposed? Motion carries. And let's go to the closed link, um. We're an hour ahead? Oh, we are, we're an hour ahead. Okay, so why don't we come back on the closed link at three o'clock, does that work, her phone? Okay, so yeah, closed, uh, closed at three o'clock.